David, I drove by to see the garden. It's pretty impressive.
Yes, my wife's doing a good job.
Hi, Ian.
There we go, much better.
I give her that encouragement from the back deck.
Cracking the whip, huh?
Oh yeah, right. I am embarrassed. It turned out to be 118 tomato plants.
Really crazy.
Well, we're gonna be doing some canning this time.
Just a little bit. I've got an extra canning pressure cooker if you want it.
We took my mother's about five years ago. It, uh, I think it came over with Columbus.
So, so you're going to have, every third day, you're going to have to eat tomatoes?
Oh no, every day.
Hey Nolan.
All right, we're at five o'clock, but take just another moment, make sure everybody's on.
All right, I'm muted. Hi Kathy, hi everybody.
Hello Bob, Rachel.
Good afternoon.
I'm the official greeter at this meeting.
Kathy's our Peggy.
I don't.
You don't say Peggy?
Here.
Here Kathy, good evening.
Good evening Peggy.
Good evening Harold.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, Harold, all. All right. Are we waiting on anything else?
Just for you to begin.
All right, well officially begin then. Welcome everyone. Thank you Kathy for greeting us as they arrived in our Zoom meeting. This is our council work session for Monday, June 1st. Can't believe it's already June. So this is via a Zoom stream. For this meeting, the city of Burlington is convening by Zoom telephone video conference call as posted on the city of Burlington's website identifying how the public may join. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is held by the Zoom platform. This meeting is streaming live on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at www.youtube.com/cobnc. Please note this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical or connection difficulties, please contact our public information specialist John Vernon at 336-513-5440 for support. For staff comments or to address council or the staff during this meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature within Zoom or pressing star nine. So that our meeting host and IT director Scott Bibler may notify you and notify us that you wish to do so. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. We are Pro Tem Hikes.
Here.
Council member Butler.
Here.
Council member Ward.
Here.
Council member Owen.
Here.
Staff presenting, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City manager Harden Watkins. Harden, I think you're muted.
Here.
There we go. City attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant city manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant city manager Rachel Kelly. Rachel, are you muted?
I'm muted.
There you go. Water resources director Bob Patterson. Finance director Peggy Reese. Economic development director Peter Bishop.
At your service.
Principal planner David Beal.
Here.
Director of transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Very good. Thank you everyone. Appreciate that formality as we make sure that everyone is tuned in correctly on the call. Item A on our agenda, community development, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. At this time, I'd like to recognize our community development administrator Sonia Randolph. Welcome.
Thank you Mayor. To affirmatively further fair housing, the city of Burlington contracted with Civitas LLC out of South Carolina to update the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. The analysis of impediments to fair housing choice examines the dynamics of the housing market from a fair housing and equal access perspective. So at this time, I'm actually going to turn over to our consultants Spencer Christian and Eric Chatham with Civitas LLC.
Hi, good evening. Thank you Sonia. We have a brief presentation. We understand you have quite a long night ahead of you perhaps, so we have a brief presentation we'd like to share with you. So at this point, I'd ask IT to allow me to share my screen. Thank you sir.
All right, looks like we have that screen share up.
Very good. Thank you. So as Sonia introduced us, we are here this evening to present to you the recently completed draft of the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. As Sonia indicated, this is a requirement of all local jurisdictions that receive HUD funding. So as a stipulation of receiving the CDBG in home funding each year, the city is required to complete an analysis of fair housing. Generally speaking, it's done every five years. As it might sound, the analysis of impediments to fair housing reviews the city's compliance in compliance of landlords and property managers throughout the city. For in comparison to the Fair Housing Act. What we have found across the country and in some cases indications here in Burlington as well. That many people are aware of the typical protected classes as we've indicated here, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the protected classes. However, many people don't understand who needs to comply with the Fair Housing Act. It's fairly obvious that large apartment complex, the managers and real estate agents and now mortgage lenders of course understand their requirements, but many people don't understand that small property managers and landlords of just a few properties are also required to abide by the Fair Housing Act. So the analysis of impediments looks at fair housing complaints and potential lawsuits that might have been carried out throughout the past five years. And looks at the actions taken by the city or by HUD here within Burlington. So we start out the analysis of impediments with a demographic analysis and a housing market analysis. We'll be sharing some highlights with you momentarily. We have looked at economic situation in Burlington since the last time this plan was conducted, but also we went back as far as 2010 to look at some trend analysis and in some cases for the housing market specifically as far back as 2000. We also looked at public and private organizations, the lending practices for mortgage brokers and bankers throughout Burlington. And any potential barriers to fair housing choice. Are citizens able to live where they want and how they want within Burlington without impediments? As the title of the plan suggests. And finally, the, at the conclusion of this presentation, I will share with you some proposed actions to address some of the real or perceived impediments that might be challenging the residents of Burlington. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Spencer Christian to share with you some of the data highlights from the report.
Good evening council. My name is Spencer Christian with Civitas. I'd like to share with you a few of the data highlights that are found in the, in the full report. Of course, many of the, the points are further explored and organized in the community profile, housing profile sections, as well as the private lending analysis that Eric spoke of. Overall, the data suggests that there is some limited choice in the realm of actual choice and quality choice, especially for low and moderate income households. These first few points highlight some of the issues of poverty and concentrated poverty within the African American community. With nearly one in every three African American or black households living in poverty. Geographically, when you look at neighborhoods in the eastern and northeastern parts of the city, as well as many of the census tracts in the downtown neighborhoods, we've seen a decline in population, a lower median household income, higher rates of poverty, higher rates of unemployment, and higher proportions of households that are cost burden. And this is despite the fact that some of those same neighborhoods have a lower median home value and lower mortgages and rents compared to other parts of the city. The map gives a brief indication of some of the more concentrated areas in regards to race and ethnicity with, you know, certain portions primarily being white and black and Hispanics and this kind of takes us back to, are these people choosing to live there because they want to or are they stuck there because of lack of affordable housing? Perhaps lack of income availability or employment, et cetera. We'll go to the next slide Eric. As many of you know, cost burden households are those that are paying more than 30% of their income towards housing needs. And housing cost burden can affect families of all income levels, but ultimately it hurts low and moderate income families disproportionately as they simply can't set money aside for childcare or for medical care, savings or home or car repair, et cetera. So ultimately their quality of life suffers and families that are severe cost burden are at risk of becoming homeless. This map tells a similar story of some of the trends that we've seen for both homeowners and renters. A key fact that sticks out is 42% of renters in the city are severely cost burden. And this is also related to some of the geographic areas we talked about in the north and the northeast. Next slide please. We've seen some of the new growth pushing out towards the southwest parts of the city. I know that this is not new to you. The eastern parts and northeastern parts of the city have a lower home value and much older home, older stock of homes. Citywide, over 60% of the homes were built before 1980. And many of those homes are in that northeastern section. Many homes in the downtown area built before 1960. So when we look at the home stock that's out there, there is a mismatch between what's affordable new housing for especially low and moderate income residents. And what is safe and sanitary housing. A lot of this older housing comes with some risk involved with it. And if these households are already cost burden, they may not be able to afford some of the upkeep, some of the rehab and maintenance that requires that. And thus again, some of their choices can be limited on where they live. Next. And this final, final data highlight is hitting on some of the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act data analysis and some of the private lending. Overall housing lending, or excuse me, housing loan denial rates for minority groups has been dropping, which is a positive trend. The top two reasons for denial are lack of credit history and debt to income ratio. And this leads to sort of an aspect of fair housing education and the need to continue teaching first time home buyer courses and helping people understand the lending process really years in advance of before they try to buy a home. We did see some spike in the subprime mortgage originations in 2017 and Burlington wasn't the only city in North Carolina that saw a similar spike. This is something of course to be aware of as it was one of the root causes of the 2007 housing crash and primarily impacted low and moderate income households. So these are some of the, the data highlights that we wanted to point out for this presentation that led to the next slide that Eric's gonna take over for the identified impediments for the city.
So again, impediments suggest that some portion of the population of Burlington may have a lack of opportunity or a lack of choice to live geographically where they would like to within the city, but also physically in the appropriate format of the house, appropriate size, appropriate style of house, appropriate accommodations for the family, perhaps disabled. And then of course, as Spencer highlighted, a home that is affordable to the given household. And again, I'd just like to remind you that not, that the cost burden impacts all income levels, but as Spencer pointed out disproportionately is impacting in Burlington, low income population and significantly impacting the renter population. So some of the impediments to fair housing choice in Burlington, the city has an older supply of housing. There is a jobs to housing imbalance as we just dove into in the full report. Many of, most of the population drives out of town to, to their place of work. There's a need to increase fair housing awareness. We found that there were relatively few fair housing complaints lodged with HUD or other fair housing agencies in North Carolina over the last five to 10 years. Given the population of Burlington, it's hard to believe that that was the only, there was, there was just a handful of complaints actually lodged. That leads us to believe that there's likely a lack of awareness of who to contact should a family or household feel like they've been discriminated against in any form. Low house, low household incomes and poverty necessitate a higher share of income needed for housing, which is sort of in turn with most renters are cost burden. So low income renters specifically are severely cost burden. So there's a need for, and as I'll segue to the, to the final slide, there's a need for more affordable housing specifically in renter housing or rental housing. And so again, there's an insufficient supply of adequate and affordable housing. And of course, the cost of new housing and the limited incentives to stimulate affordable housing. So construction costs around the country and in North Carolina are extremely high. So it makes it very difficult for developers to be able to build new housing that's in affordable range. So we've come up with, working with staff, a list of nine actions that the city might use some of their HUD funding over the next five to 10 years to try to address these impediments. Very quickly, action one, to establish financial incentives for affordable housing development. Expand the role of for profit, nonprofit developers, assisting the city to develop affordable housing within the city. Expand and continue with downtown redevelopment efforts. Increase fair housing publication and fair housing practices, including stronger code enforcement efforts. Encourage Burlington employers to initiate employee housing assistance programs. There's several good examples in North Carolina and around the country. This is becoming a more popular trend where large employers understand that if people are having to commute from long distances to, to work with them, they're less likely to want to work there. So many employers around the country are getting involved in affordable housing for their, for their workforce. Leverage vacant land for affordable housing. This is something the city does currently and we encourage you to continue to do so. Likewise, with the recent revisions and review of the zoning codes and ordinances around housing and housing development and redevelopment of vacant lots. City's done some work there and we can encourage you to continue those reviews. Finally, providing tenant information and adopt eviction assistance measures. This is something that's certainly part of the economic impacts, if you will, of the COVID-19 crisis. We're expecting high eviction rates pending with the high in sudden unemployment. And finally maximize existing housing program funds. So as you put those limited home and CDBG dollars out for the community, try to leverage those with state, the federal and foundation funds that might be available for leveraging additional resources there in Burlington. At this point, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have and I can stop my sharing. So it's a little easier to see.
Wonderful. Thank you Eric and Spencer. This time, do we have any questions from council?
I've got one if I could. The state and federal funds that you're mentioning to leverage. Can you give us example of what those funds are and what those programs are?
Yes sir, happy to do so. The, the biggest example, if you will, the, the largest resource for developing affordable rental housing in the country by far and without a doubt is the low income housing tax credit program. That's administered by North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And having done many of those projects throughout North Carolina over the last decade, we're very familiar with that process. That process for a developer to be able to build an affordable apartment rental housing through that program. They have to have local buy-in from city council or county council, whatever jurisdiction might be appropriate. You could utilize CDBG funds and perhaps vacant parcels to redevelop or improve infrastructure or the redevelopment potential for some of your vacant or underutilized properties so that it might be enticing to developers and quite frankly, more affordable for developers, which then makes them more competitive in that application for again, the low income housing tax credit program administered by North Carolina Housing Finance. North Carolina Housing Finance also has a couple other affordable rental development program funds. And through the North Carolina Housing Trust Fund, there's also Federal Home Loan Bank out of Atlanta. And in your jurisdiction, probably also out of Richmond that would provide funds as well for developers. And in those cases, a developer might have assistance from funding from the city, from the home program or the CDBG. Might have a bank loan and then might get some grants from the Federal Home Loan Bank as well to leverage multiple resources to make the project reasonable and feasible to offer such low rents. The real hard part here is the cost of construction anywhere in the country is just so high that it's hard to be able to offer rents that low. The math, this doesn't work. You can't get a loan to build an apartment complex if the rents won't pay the debt and that's the hard part. So anyway, you can help subsidize that allows the developer to be able to, quite frankly, be able to afford the deal.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I read the entire report in detail, spent a lot of time looking at it very thorough, a lot of information. I was sort of trying to get my head around kind of the narrative and the focus. And there's lots of bits and pieces, lots of nuances in here. And then I looked at some of the data and I went back and looked statistically and I've got a couple of questions about that. We talked about the poverty rate in the, in the study on page two and it said that it's, it's increased approximately 50% since 2010. If you, if you look back at the, our, our data that we have. The poverty rate in, in 2010 was 19.6 and 2017 is 20.5%. So are you talking about a specific class? Or the rate in general? Because it certainly is not doubled if we're talking about the full poverty rate. I just want to kind of get an understanding of that.
Forgive me, I don't have that, that data point right in front of me. Spencer, do you have the poverty statistics right accessible that you might be able to address?
If you guys could just get, get your data and shoot it to us. I don't, I'm not really looking for an answer right now. I just kind of wondered if that's a specific class or are we treating everybody poverty rate period?
I can speak to that briefly. So that is from the census data from 2000 compared to the census data of 2017. And it's the rate, it's the rate of increase. So the overall rate, so that we may have poorly worded that the rate has increased by nearly 50%, but the actual rate is 20.5%.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. And then kind of the same along the same lines. You know, when I look at the, the we talked about those that have the lowest household income in the city, African American households in four census tracts, it's, it's kind of above average. And the margin of error I noted on those studies were really high, like an $18,000 margin of error to a $23,000 margin of error. Is that a reliable statistic?
Yeah, and I can, to some degree, you're, you're absolutely correct. The, the statistics are, the margin of error makes it, diminishes the value of some of these data points. There isn't a replacement for some of these data points though, unfortunately, and it's driven by census. So even if you were to use something like the GIS department, I'm sure uses ESRI data or any of these other. Everybody unfortunately for these type of demographic analysis bases it on the census information. So if census has a margin of error of 18%, well then nobody can really make their information better than what the census was starting out with. So some of these data points are essentially required as part of the analysis for HUD. But, but we do have to caveat that in, and I think in our methodology section of the report, we kind of addressed that we have to use these data points. They're only, you know, they're only as new as 2017 when we got started with this report. Even today, they're only available through 2018. So the census is so slow to release the data, it starts to be a little bit outdated by the time you can, you can generate a report like this. So there is some of that to, to, to take into account. What we try to focus on is though is the trends and that's why I say in some of these cases, we went all the way back to 2000 so that we could see what it was, what it was doing prior to the housing crash in seven to, to 2010. And then see how it's hopefully leveled back out since then for trend analysis.
So, and I understand that and it's, it's all we have to go by. It's, that's the data and it's the data we have to use. With us having four census tracts where the household income is above average. Does that suggest that we don't really have a systemic? does that suggest that we don't really have a systemic problem, but it's a very isolated problem, getting back to those older homes? Is that kind of where we land with that?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. That would be the issue. And from HUD's perspective, the more segregated, and that doesn't necess, I mean, there does, the maps do point to some racial segregation, but definitely also income segregation. And so as HUD takes a look at this, that's what they want you to focus on, what they refer to as racial and ethnic concentrations of poverty. And where we see that in the north and northeast and those older neighborhoods, of course.
So similar to, similar to the poverty rate statistic, on page three, we talked about the city's unemployment rate doubled between 2000, 2017. And based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, in 2000, it was 3.3%, and at the end of 17, it was 3.7%. Pre-COVID 2020, it was 3.6%, so it's really maintained over that time. It did, obviously, it did spike in '08, '09, 2010. But is it the same doubling of the rate versus doubling of the statistic similar to poverty? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Because it's been pretty consistent. You talked about subprime originations spiking. I know nationally, that's been sort of the trend. That, to a large degree, subprime lending has created more homeowners. Because without that vehicle, there would obviously be less that could qualify for a home loan. But subprime is definitely what got us in trouble back with the countrywide deal and everything that went on regarding banking back in '08, '09. But any significant difference in our area versus national as far as that spike goes?
I would say nationally, that spike, Burlington was a little higher than the national average for subprime in 2017. Overall, if you'd stretch that out over maybe a three-year period. I mean, I think what we can see nationally from mortgage lenders is we had a crash, and we started coming back. New mortgages were for only the primist of prime. And now that, as more loans have been being made, let's just, to be blunt, lenders are looking for new borrowers, and so they're working their way back down to subprime. So I think in areas like, and I mean, North Carolina as a whole, really recovered quickly, and you've had a housing boom everywhere from Charlotte through to Raleigh over the last five to 10 years. So you were kind of ahead of the curve, if you will, on rebounding from the original housing crisis. So you're probably ahead of the curve on seeing subprime coming back. I think when we look at 18, 19, and probably until COVID, the first part of 2020, subprime was coming back nationwide at that level as well. You're just ahead of the curve, I think, is what we'll see ultimately.
So in listening to your presentation versus the amount of data that I read, there was, your presentation tended to focus a little bit more on landlords. And there was a lot of commentary in the report about mortgage lenders and, you know, the reasons that someone could not get a loan. And then, you know, in reading through it entirely, there was a portion dedicated to talking about redlining things such as that. And with my, I've served on the executive board of a publicly traded bank, and I've actually chaired a loan committee. So based on my knowledge, the Community Reinvestment Act sort of set that will in motion in 1977 to kind of eliminate redlining. And then, you know, all banks have to have a written loan policy, and then that loan policy, they have their criteria on that. If they deviate from that loan policy, I mean, most banks now, they've got more compliance officers than loan officers. So if they're deviating from that loan policy, regardless of race or anything, doesn't matter. If they deviate from that loan policy, it's an exception, and that loan's written up as an exception. And then when the regulators come in, they're inspecting that for an explanation of why you did that loan, whether it's good or bad. And then they're written up, obviously, whether it's the FDIC, whether it's the North Carolina Commissioner of Banks. We obviously have a large and very vibrant banking commission in North Carolina. I just don't see that as being a systemic problem with term redlining.
And I don't want to identify as an impediment that there was lending discrimination. What there is, however, fairly clearly and certainly 10 years ago, but it's gotten better, the denial, reasons for denial in denial rates, they're different by race. And it's, as Spencer pointed out in that highlight slide, the reasons for denial are declining for all applicants. But yet minority populations are still denied at a higher rate than white applicants. That is fairly clear and obvious, and has been that way nationwide since we've been tracking lending, but certainly as far back as we go in this report, minorities have been denied at a higher rate. What that points to, and again, when you look at the reasons for denial, the lack of credit history being the number one, and lack of collateral. And collateral just speaks to the value of the property, of course. So I don't have, because I have not, and minorities tend to use, utilize mainstream banks at a lower rate than white population. That's nationwide fairly obvious and known fact. But then also, when minority populations in Burlington are applying for loans in that north to northeast part of the city, the properties just aren't worth as much. They're not able to borrow as much, and there's just not enough collateral in some of those properties for lenders.
I do know, I do know there's a significant amount of pressure on refis, refinancing. And we sort of got in a little bit of a catch-22 in Burlington, certainly within our market. And Harold helped me out with this, and the last revow, or Harden, we were, we went down, our actual home values went down 1.8%. Does that sound right?
Harden, you're on. Can I mute again? There you go.
1.6%.
1.6%. So, so obviously, if somebody's got an existing mortgage and then the value of their home through the reevaluation program that the county does, it goes down. And, you know, there was some statistics about property tax rates and things like that, which, other than revenue-neutral adjustments, we've not made any property tax increases ad lorem since, gosh, 2006, maybe, a long time, other than getting neutral through a revow. So we seem to be in pretty good position from the standpoint that not a lot of our mortgage fees are tied up in property tax-esque growth. So that's a positive thing, but that's, obviously, that's why these revaluations are so important. It truly has an impact. It has as much of an impact on affordable housing as far as financial options go than anything. But, you know, if you really look at it holistically. One of the things that I read on page five, it says that the FHP should provide steps to get us to a less discriminatory lending policy. Less discriminatory than what? Do we have a baseline for what the discriminatory points are or just perceived?
Well, I think some of those, again, I agree with you that the discriminatory policies may be perceived, the outcomes are not the same, and so, and they're not, they're not uniform. Again, so if everybody's being denied for the same reasons at the same rate when incomes are neutral, right? In the full report, we adjust, if you will. We look at the denial rates across races for everybody that's say 80% of the area median income. And yet, with incomes being neutral, if you will, or even comparison, yet still minority populations are denied at higher rates. So there may not be outright redlining and bias in the lending by the mortgage brokers, but the outcomes don't speak to the same.
So that's assuming everybody's FICO score or Beacon score with decent odds.
And they're not. And that's, the reasons for denial are higher for a lack of credit history. And so again, it's not going to be just, well, let's fix everybody's credit. So that's why that Fair Housing Action Plan has sort of a long list. And let's just be honest, you could continue to do fair housing promotion and use your CDBG public service dollars to fund fair housing counseling and credit counseling programs for the next 20 years. And that doesn't mean that we're going to see a statistical improvement. You don't have enough CDBG dollars to put everybody in the city through fair housing counseling and credit improvement counseling. So to some degree, where these are programs that you've done, you've supported in the past, and the data would indicate that you need to continue to support them in the future.
Well, obviously, with our, the North Carolina Commissioner of Banks, they do a really good job at educating their banking population, their boards, their directors, their loan officers, compliance officers. So I do believe that there is a lack of awareness. I fully understand that, but also think that the low rate of complaints has a lot to do with how our commissioner of banks operate and how our lenders operate in general. I wouldn't want to just assume that it's automatically bad because there's a low number of complaints. As a matter of fact, I looked up to see if we had any complaint. And I think every lender in our, in Alamance County, every lender in Burlington certainly had, on the CRA site, had a satisfactory rating or better. So every five years, they go through that compliance audit, I think. And at least to that extent, it looked, it looked really good. So when we look at these action items that we have here, you know, we just went through a UDO change, obviously. Density being a big deal, we changed density tremendously to really facilitate what affordable housing. That really helps a builder, that goes a long ways to make the numbers work.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think it's important that we give that time, that thing time to grow and see how much of an improvement that gets. I remember a term years ago when we had the Jordan Lake rules to my colleagues. When we had the Jordan Lake rules coming up, everybody said, we've got Phase Two stormwater, let's see what it does. Well, I think we can kind of say the same thing here. We've got this new UDO, that's a positive step. Let's see what that does. I've got, Harden, I've got a couple of other, I don't want to tie everybody up on this, but I've got some other.
Tim has some questions too, so I want to make sure we get those.
Yeah, yeah. Over a list, Harden, and maybe have you circle back.
Okay, we'll be happy to.
Kathy?
I just wanted to ask about, you mentioned CHODOS in here, and I'm not aware that there are any CHODOS operating in the city right now. Is that right, Sonya?
Well, we had two that we consistently used to work with Alamance County Community Services Agency and then Habitat for Humanity. They are both actually in the process of typing up an audit report for Habitat to submit to Greensboro. So as soon as they are both cleared in the audit department from the city of Greensboro, we can continue with them as CHODOS. But I think the point that Eric and Spencer made in the report in regards to CHODOS was that we need to develop their capacity, which has seemed to be a problem with both Habitat and ACCSA in terms of the expertise and the management of their programs. And so that is one of the things that my division has started to do is to develop that capacity with the CHODOS. So we also are in the process of kind of vetting or making sure that we develop the capacity with another nonprofit developer here in the area so that they could potentially be one of our CHODOS as well. And eventually, my hope is that we can kind of put the word out to other nonprofit developers so that they can be a CHODO as well to kind of just do some type of RFP or something like that, maybe in the future, to kind of help with that, to kind of build some type of marketing or relations efforts to kind of get more people here to develop.
A lot of the conversation in here was about the number of housing units that there are. One of the numbers that surprised me was the 11% vacancy rate of our whole housing stock. That number seemed pretty high to me. But the other thing, the frustration that I feel is that we can't force developers to come in and build the kind of, any kind of housing, really. It seems like we've lagged behind that whole crescent that you're talking about from Charlotte to Wake County. We haven't been building as many houses in Burlington over time. So that seems to apply that pressure all along the system and what's affordable and where people can move. I don't know what the answer to that kind of problem is, but does, do our consultants have any ideas about how you encourage people to come into your community and build the kind of housing besides the incentives that you mentioned?
Well, there's also, in our affordable housing development world, there's a term called naturally occurring affordable housing. And I think you have the potential for quite a bit of naturally occurring affordable housing in Burlington. There's, as you well know, we're not telling you anything you don't know, but there's a lot of properties that are underutilized, and of course, there's 11% vacancy. So as you continue to look at UDO and other incentives possible, I would encourage you to continue to look at the feasibility of redeveloping sites that are underutilized. Is a single-family property that was built in the 60s, is it feasible for a developer, and just a small-time developer, to come in and tear down a blighted property and build a duplex on that same lot? Or is that lot now too small, the units couldn't be big enough to meet the code? And I'll be honest, we weren't able, in our scope of work, we weren't able to get down to like parcel-level advisement. You know, the planning and zoning firms would do that kind of work with you, I'm sure, in your comprehensive plans. But those types of options are available to Burlington. So you can make incentives by making properties more enticing and making the development or the redevelopment process easier and, for lack of a better word, just cheaper. It doesn't have to be large-scale for-profit developers building apartment complexes that, you know, many of your residents don't want to see concentrations of poverty. And that's certainly understandable. Charlotte, Raleigh, they need large apartment complexes for affordable housing. Burlington maybe doesn't need large apartment complexes, but duplexes, quadplexes, et cetera, better utilization of existing parcels in your historic neighborhoods. They could be redeveloped into a duplex that the architecture still fits the neighborhood. It's just two units now instead of one, and they're both more affordable.
Yeah, certainly on some of the more affordable infill lots.
Yeah, absolutely. And so I would encourage you, definitely, we understand you've redone the zoning ordinances, et cetera. I would just encourage you to continue to look at that with an eye for, how could these vacant and underutilized parcels, what's the feasibility for redeveloping them for anything other than just redeveloping that existing single-family home that was, you know, again, built in the 60s?
So building on the kind of that question and your comments and Jim's comment earlier about the zoning changes we've made, we've enabled duplex and up to fourplex on lots. And one of the feedback items I've gotten from developers is that they're, they struggle to build a fourplex under our new model because there's no comps. And so it's difficult to get lending to build that. Is there, have you seen anything or strategies cities have implemented to kind of seed the market on something when you're doing something that innovative and cutting edge?
Yeah, absolutely. And this is where your home funds and your CDBG funds can come in. And I realize that it's not like huge funds, it's not going to solve all problems. But the unique aspect of those home funds, for example, is let's say a developer wants to build a fourplex. And let's say that fourplex is going to cost $200,000 for just simple math. But, but the banks But but the banks won't let them do, won't, give me one second. I have a little dog next to me making some noise, sorry about that. So let's say a developer wants to do a fourplex, but can't get a bank to lend them the 200,000 it's going to be to to build this unit. The home funds, let's say you could just put in 20 or 40,000, so you're only in for 10, 20%. Well, that might get enough collateral in there, enough equity in that deal for the developer to then borrow the rest. The beauty is your home funds then are going to be subordinate to the primary. And so Mr. Butler might be able to elaborate. What bank doesn't want to jump in on a four brand new fourplex with 40% or 20 or 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 40% or more, depending on how much home money you could put in as as being subordinate debt, that's non recourse debt, et cetera. So I would encourage you to try to leverage those smaller funds you have for developers that are looking to do those types of deals. Can't get all the way to the construction financing they need. You don't have enough funds in those home funds and C D B G to fund projects fully. So you've got to be the 10 or the 20% first in money to then get the bank enticed. That's enough to get some of the banks interested in the deal, certainly when you're able to subordinate.
And and to Eric's point on that, if if we could get a group of, if we could get our bankers together and 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 pitch them on what we're trying to accomplish. And and they understood where that money was coming from and that it would be a a junior lien subordinate to theirs, I think they might would need to make some loan policy adjustments in order to do that, but I promise you, some of them would be willing to do it, especially your community.
And and I just wanted to add too, that Eric had mentioned this one time before earlier in our discussion about low income housing tax credits. So we have had a for profit developer to approach us about low income housing tax credits and partnering with them to use some of our home funds just for the same thing that Eric just mentioned is to be that 10 or that 20% to get them up to that point so that they can get the other lending. So we're starting to kind of garner that. So I do realize that it is something kind of new to do with our home and our C D B G funds, but is definitely something that is doable. I do also want to point out also that I've also been in conversations with Conrad. We've had some smaller developers to kind of that have some that have property that have actually come to us or come to the planning department, Conrad first and then to me about smaller developments in certain areas of the city. So I do think that we are heading in the right direction in terms of the U D O and what we've done. And then just like Eric said, is to continue that momentum and to make sure that we continue that momentum and use our home and C D B G dollars to develop more housing.
I have another question. When you were talking about barriers in the market earlier, and one thing that I didn't seem to see anything about was the appraisal process. And I was curious if any of your research looks into that because it is a key factor in access to loans. And it doesn't seem that appraisers were included in the list of folks who have to comply with fair housing. And what I've seen and heard in our community is that some folks may get an appraisal on a property, whether they're trying to buy or sell and have it graded as, I think it's a C four, where it puts it out of range of a traditional lender. And now their property is in many ways stuck because they it can only be sold to somebody with offering cash. So they all of a sudden can't get a fair price for it because the most of the buyers are are locked out on that property. And so noticing that we have these these low income neighborhoods where all the property values have decreased and folks then end up with properties where they're either locked in that property, they can't unlock that property and get out of it to move to where they want to be, or where folks who want to move into those neighborhoods to fix up a house can't get traditional or conventional lending, and so they can't come in and revitalize the property and be a an active force in their in that neighborhood. Have you seen anything like that or seen any strategies to kind of widen that conversation?
To be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, we we did not look into appraisals in that process for Burlington. That that I honestly, that's an interesting point that we'd be happy to to dive in a little further. We'll be working with Sonya and her team for a while longer. We'd be happy to take a step back before we are back in front of this council.
Yeah, I'd be really curious to to get your thoughts on that. I I know I've read a couple of articles about some alternative methods for doing appraisals, specifically in the comps. Because if you're comparing everything in a low income neighborhood, then everything's going to be low value when there may actually be better comps outside of it. So there there's some alternative methods to doing appraisals too. So I wasn't, but they can't necessarily always be used by traditional appraisal companies. So I was just curious, that seems to be a a barrier that I've talked to residents about in our community. So it'd be it'd be nice to widen the lens and and really understand that more thoroughly.
We we will be happy to take a look at that over the next coming weeks and update you on our findings when we're back in front of this council for the for the next presentation.
Great. Other questions from council? All right, obviously, this is something we're all passionate about, and we really appreciate your report. So Eric and Spencer and Sonya, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Sorry, we do have, we do have three organizations that we did invite that had looked at the study. So we have Heidi Norick from United Way, we have Jay Baker from Allied Churches, and I have a written statement to read from the Burlington Housing Authority. Unfortunately, they were not able to be present tonight at the meeting.
All right, do we want to start with Heidi then?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you so much for the invitation to be included. I'm actually, it's quite extensive. And I think many of the issues, especially around the data, were, you know, not anything surprising, but maybe even a little bit more alarming than than I might have thought. So I'm we're anxious to use that as we go ahead and plan strategies for United Way and how we address disparities in our in our in the city and and certainly across the county. So I this has been very informative, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And and I hope that we continue to look at those marginalized populations and people who haven't had access and appreciate Sonya's work in working with us, United Way and many nonprofits in the community. So thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the meeting.
Thank you, Heidi. Jay?
You're muted, Jay.
Okay, am I unmuted this time?
There we go, we've got you. Go ahead.
Great, same as well to the council as well as the mayor. And Sonya, we appreciate the invite. We also at Allied Churches think that we're definitely in line with how do we take those units? And again, come from a duplex to a quadplex or quadplex to whatever place. I think that in north and northeast Burlington, we have to figure out how to get that done. How are we going to be able to increase the volume of housing in that area? While we have an increase in employment opportunities, the there are still old low wage earners, which puts them historically in having to work 60 to 65 hours a week to make ends meet. But there's still cost burden, and how do we do that? What do we do? How do we do that? How do we make that work? In a in a field where we actually go out and actually do the HUD inspections, we are in agreement that in the north and northeast area of city of Burlington, that those houses are kind of old. And they don't pass inspection. Last week, we went to three homes to potentially house families, but we could not house them because the homes could not pass inspection. And again, to be clear, that is not a knock against code enforcement. That is just the condition of the home and the age and the abnormal attrition and wear and tear of the home. How do we continue to move that forward? I think that's going to be big for what we do for the marginalized population, that population that doesn't have the ability to move to that next higher level of housing. But I definitely appreciate the the report. It kind of gave us some meat and some teeth and some ideas on what we need to do with Allied Churches as far as housing and what the Alamance Housing Committee would need to do this year to kind of further the city of Burlington along.
Thank you, Jay. All right, Sonya, do you want to read the statement from Burlington Housing Authority?
Yes. So in the statement comes from, it is written by Nikki Leandra, Nikki Ratliff, who's a Program Services Director for the Burlington Housing Authority. So she writes, with over 800 people on our waitlist, Burlington Housing Authority understands the critical need for affordable housing and fair housing. We operate 368 public housing units, which totals close to 1,000 units. Other income based complexes such as Beaumont, Lakeside and Tucker Street apartment have close to 250 units. So we recognize that this is not enough to meet the demand. While other complexes don't exceed the fair market rent, the average rent will still be a cost burden to most families. And so she also states that the current house housing stock that is affordable and does not present all the time always a safety or health issue or cars or cost burden has been exhausted. And so she says that the Burlington Housing Authority continues to see developments being constructed, but not always necessarily for low income households. So she states that these new developments might perpetuate the concentration of poverty in certain areas of our city and that many of our low income citizens come to Burlington Housing Authority to find decent housing as they are living in unsafe conditions and housing that does not, that's not always safe or healthy. And so she does make another statement about landlords. Sorry, I am cutting a little bit, some of it out just for time sake. But she does go on to say that Burlington Housing Authority really looks for to partnering with the city to strategize and more importantly, to create more affordable housing for low income citizens, which is something that they are definitely working towards with their transition from the old model of being a Burlington of a housing authority to the new model they are doing and trying to do a different mix of households.
All right, excellent. Sonya, anything else you want to add?
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much for that presentation. We appreciate you continuing to work in the community and especially with all the councils been digging into this on this lately. These data points are particularly helpful, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So move, again, thank you, Eric and Spencer. Next, we'll move to item B on our agenda, city initiatives to support phase two business reopening. At this time, we'll recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members and other guests to this call. It's good to be here with you. I'm here to give you a quick follow up report emphasizing quick. That was a great discussion we just had on public housing and the impediments report. So I will go ahead and get started on my presentation. And this is a comprehensive report, an update to city council after our May 19th discussion at your council meeting about some dining options. So I'm going to share my screen here momentarily. Let's see, where did it go? I can't see why. Is that what I want to do? Huh, let me try that again. Hopefully it'll work this time. There we go.
All right, looks like it's coming up. There we go.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about the technical difficulties. So this is our follow up report for outdoor dining. As I mentioned, staff presented a report to you at our last meeting on the 19th. Since that time, we've had several, actually, before that time and up to now, we've had several collaborative staff meetings with all of our impacted departments. And, you know, our first meetings were talking about the ideas and what we were seeing in other communities and looking at the existing tools that we've had. And we have since then had more close group meetings with individual departments like planning and community development, like economic development and our recreation and parks Burlington events, folks, to all look at individual pieces of outdoor dining and outdoor use and how we could be expanding that. We've gone further, we've had one on one meetings with every one of our downtown eateries, restaurants and cafes. We have started the process of going out to other locations throughout the city of Burlington and meeting with folks in more suburban and private locations throughout the city. So that one on one personal contact is ongoing amongst staff. And then finally, the goal for all of this, of course, in addition to getting businesses, putting receipts together again and and being open was to focus on simplicity, using our existing tools in the box, being as flexible as possible within our regulations. And then again, safety, of course, being very important in COVID-19. And then also, when you're putting dining in places that dining has not been previously, you need to be very cautious about how you do that. So the phase two reopening, if you recall during our last conversation, a lot of these details weren't exactly finalized quite yet. So we were talking on the 19th, and I believe on the later that day, if not the next day, the governor announced what phase two was going to look like. So thankfully, the state produced this very nice comparison document. And we were focusing mostly on restaurants, of course, and getting their occupancy back as close to 100% as possible. So the guidance provided by the governor's office for phase two shows us that restaurants were able to open at 50% capacity. However, if you were to expand outdoor dining options for them, they could get up to 100% capacity of their original stated capacity in those buildings. And of course, and unfortunately for gyms and fitness studios, they were not allowed to open fully during phase two. But we we were working with them and and did work with them on developing an outdoor permit, which is one of the, really the bright spots and interesting pieces that we worked on here with this outdoor permitting regime. The state did provide some good guidance. They partnered, the state of North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, D H H S, partnered with the North Carolina Restaurant and Lodging Association to create Count On Me N C. And this is a voluntary program that provides a direct guidance to restaurants and to restaurant customers and business owners altogether so that there's a shared set of expectations, so that all the restaurants are aware of the laws and regulations, what's expected of them for sanitization, for separation of customers, et cetera, and for customers to know how they can protect themselves and protect some of the other patrons at businesses when they go out. So that countonmec.org is a great resource. And several, I think 10 already Burlington based businesses like Burlington Beer Works, Zacks, have already joined the Count On Me N C program. So now that we do have guidance and we have an idea of what we're looking to do, of course, city staff at the direction of council went and modified a few of our outdoor permit permits to be COVID permits temporarily. The changes we made, as we described to you last time, were to make these time limited. So 30 days after or a time specific after the phase two is over is when these expire. They there are no fees for them, so we've waived all fees related to temporary COVID dining permits. And as I mentioned before, we've added a third permit since our last discussion. Since we were talking in our groups and and seeing what was going on outside, and since gyms were not able to open, what we've done is we've allowed fitness studios and gyms to have organized classes on non recreation public green space in the city. Our Emily Crowley and Caitlin Brown with B Town Events and Burlington Recreation and Parks did an excellent job modifying a form that they had developed with Downtown Yoga and Bar last year. And Carrie Anne Stafford and Downtown Yoga requested to use the city hall green, actually right outside my window, as I can see here, to do some outdoor yoga courses. Since then, we have had a flood of interest in these outdoor exercise permits. So we have right now, this is a report that I received earlier from Emily Crowley. We have currently three, three permits out for Burn Bootcamp for use at Joe Davidson Park, Downtown Yoga and Bar, as I mentioned, using the municipal lawn and Springwood Park. And then Feel Better Yoga is looking to use Davidson Park. We're in discussion with four other fitness studios and gyms to utilize public spaces. And there have been 30 classes already taking place on public spaces through our outdoor recreation permit. So that's a pretty, pretty amazing turnaround and set of interest from our businesses. And we're very glad that folks have been able to use. And we're very glad that folks have been able to use that and get out and use some of our parks and public spaces so far. Finally, then, after we've started finalizing all these documents, now we've got to communicate them. And as I mentioned, staff has been out doing one-on-ones with businesses and meeting and taking our time to get this information out there. We've also been very active with the media and on social media. So Morgan Lassiter and John Vernon with our Public Information Office produced a nice press release, and we've been on the news a few times. I did a spot with Fox 8 and with, gosh, who was this one for? WFMY, Channel 12, Spectrum News picked up a story on us. And then this next slide shows some of the social media shares on Facebook and Twitter that we've been getting the information out. So a pretty good reach and engagement on our Facebook page for this announcement. So we're excited to have that. So as I mentioned before, we have reached out directly to the businesses in our downtown. And we did that first because, of course, our offices are here downtown. And downtown specifically is dealing with a lot of public spaces. There aren't a lot of private spaces that we could accommodate expanded outdoor dining in downtown. So we all went out with copies of the permits and met with several businesses, sat down, talked about where they were as a business, where they, where they were as folks. So, you know, when you go and meet with these people, the approach isn't to, you know, say how they could be doing their business better. It's to ask how they are doing as individuals, how their business has gone since, you know, COVID started, and understand where they are, and to talk about some of the options that are available and what else they're seeing, what else we could be doing as a city to help them. So that was very successful. We had very good feedback from our downtown businesses that we met with. And as I mentioned, we're doing this process now outside of downtown and meeting with restaurateurs throughout the city. And the questions that we're getting are very positive. We're getting great feedback. As I mentioned, we have a lot of recreation-focused businesses that are using our public spaces, which is great. We're seeing more activity in folks out there. We have several downtown businesses that are looking to expand their sidewalk seating and outdoor alfresco dining spaces, which means eating in the air. And only in the United States, though, Italians don't say alfresco for outdoor dining, for whatever reason, just Americans, just a little fact I found. And then we're continuing our outreach citywide, where we're going to continue meeting with other businesses and dining establishments and landowners and land, property owners to see about making outdoor dining work as best as we can for our businesses. That concludes my presentation to council. Certainly would take any questions or any discussion at this time.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from council members?
I have a question, Mayor, Peter. I know you, I know you had mentioned you'd talked to other restaurants and businesses downtown that, you know, how the city could help them. Has any of the restaurants, other than Beer Works, requested assistance from the city of Burlington? Have, or do any of them have a special, I guess maybe a special event application in, other than a Beer Works?
Emily Crowley is not on this call, so I can't speak directly to what she may have in her queue for special events, applications, specific to street closures. I am not aware of any. You asked also if other restaurants had asked the city for assistance. We have had multiple, maybe off the record or casual conversations with restaurateurs throughout the city about what we were looking to do with outdoor dining, what we were looking to do with any sort of grants or microloans or direct business assistance. And we certainly heard from restaurants about resources as some of the stay-at-home orders were first starting so that we could help communicate that they were open and they were still taking orders. So we have received a lot of requests for assistance and support from our restaurant community, but not so many specific to street closures.
Okay, one, one follow-up question. If you could just give me, you know, well, tomorrow evening would be fine, but if you could let me know if anybody else was applied for a special event, like use of Main Street, like Beer Works or anybody else has made a request.
I can speak for Emily. She's only got one request in the queue, and that's the Main Street request from Burlington Beer Works.
From, who is it from? Rachel?
Burlington Beer Works.
Okay, and that's the only one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But the others are aware that they can make application for a special event. Is that correct?
Yes, that was, that's included in the conversation that Peter and his team had.
I'm sorry, didn't understand. Say that again?
Said, yes, sir, that was in the conversations that Peter and his team had had all the different options that the downtown restaurants could utilize to gain access to more space.
Okay, well, thanks. I mean, I, I got a question or two from time to time, and I just, I just want to make sure that they understand that they can do the same, you know, under this, under our new policy. So I believe they give the information. I think, thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ward, to clarify, when staff met with the different business owners, we gave them information about how to expand sidewalk dining, how to utilize the depot space, how to utilize parking lot spaces, or how to possibly move forward with the street closure. So we provided every option that was available to them in discussion and then provided the paperwork as well to follow up.
Okay, great, thanks.
Other questions from council?
Are we aware of any of the options of using private lots that we talked about at our last meeting in terms of the number of restaurants throughout the city that's opened? Has there been any conversation, or you all heard of any restaurants who may be moving out and parking lots and potentially setting up tents? And obviously, there's, you know, some, certainly some red tape there with the owners of the property itself, but what's the response been to that?
Thus far, our response has been positive. We've heard from some restaurants who are seeking to obtain outdoor tables and chairs to accommodate additional outdoor eating. Some folks have, are going to pull what they have inside, and they can't use outside. As of, just before this presentation, we have not yet received a formal application for a private property to expand dining. Although Blake Moyer in the Economic Development Department met with seven restaurants outside of the city, he and I have not had a chance to detail debrief. I expect we're going to see some requests from some of the restaurants he stopped and talked with. Some folks have already started expanding their dining outdoors. So I think we've, we've got to talk to them about the processes that we've put in place and the very simple and online fee, no-fee review that we have of what they're looking to do. But yes, Councilmember Owen, I do suspect that we are going to see some folks expand their seating. It will be a function of if this is available and the parking and the chairs and tables are at their disposal. So there are a few physical constraints that we were aware of that some folks have shared with us that they're trying to figure out.
Thank you.
Other questions from council?
I have a forward-looking question regarding the outdoor recreation process. And in thinking of my travels abroad and going to public spaces and parks, and you see Tai Chi and other kind of informal gatherings of people on a daily basis utilizing green spaces throughout a city, that's something we haven't seen quite as much in the city. Do you see an opportunity, or could you explore an opportunity going beyond the COVID crisis to further enable that type of permitting?
Well, interestingly enough, the outdoor recreation permit is modified from an already existing permit process that Emily Crowley developed last year in response to this exact question. We had, I believe it was Downtown Yoga &amp; Bar wanted to use an unutilized green space of our lawn here. So we already approached this issue last year with a private business wanting to use a public space for their classes and develop this process in response to it. Now, that process had a fee involved because you have a private business that's using public space for profit in an organized fashion. So that, because this is a temporary process in response to a pandemic, the fee was removed. That would be something that you may want to look at in the future if you're looking to reserve public spaces for for-profit private recreation. But no, I think that we do have some beautiful green spaces in the city that we'd love to see utilized. And if folks are interested in doing this now, I certainly would agree that they'd be interested in doing it in the future and that we should maintain or think about an equitable way to do this going forward.
Yeah, I think it creates an interesting experiment in a zero fee to see kind of what the demand is and the interest for it. And then obviously, going forward, we can look at what really is a fair price or fee for that to enable access and to better utilize the green spaces that we're already investing in.
I believe we need to be very careful with that. And I say it in a sense of, a long history of the city is when a private business utilizes public property and charges a fee. We need to be consistent because once you open this up, without getting, whether it's a small percentage the city would get or whatever, you're going to create some, hopefully when this virus goes away, some substantial issues with normal use of facilities, athletic fields. It's a great example, mentioned Davidson Park, private soccer clubs, all these different things that come in. So I'm not trying to be a downer on this, but I do think from a legal side, and I'm certainly not a lawyer, so Bob and David speak up here, but that's been a fairly standard policy for, at least I know for the last 45 years, when you have a private individual offering a program with a fee-based concept on public property, there was a percentage of that normally, a policy's established where the city receives a small amount of money or whatever it may be, based on a percentage. But you almost got to have some kind of control there.
Yeah, yeah, and I recognize supply and demand. We've got fairly limited kind of field-specific areas, so a softball field or a soccer field. But when you start talking about a yoga class or a Tai Chi class that could use any green space or glen or glade in a park, you start to realize that you have a lot of, you have a lot of supply. And so how do we leverage that? But you bring up some good points, Councilmember Rowland. Any other questions on this topic?
All right, thank you, Peter. We appreciate your work and your continued diligence. And we know it's not easy reaching out to all those businesses and keeping them up to date, but we appreciate the work you're doing, along with your.
Thank you.
On item C on our agenda, the Carousel House update. At this time, we'll recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
All right. Can everyone see my slides? Do you guys see the slides?
Yep, you're good.
Got it, yep.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay. We will certainly be brief this evening, but we recognize that we haven't come to you guys with a update on the Carousel House project since December. And the project is, the design is complete at this point. So we thought this was a good opportunity to give you an update and show you where we've been since December. Brandon Holt is the Capital Projects Manager, and he's on the call as well. So he is going to be more familiar with the technical details of the project. So feel free to direct questions to him, or I may defer him on, defer to him on some of the questions. All right, so before we jump into the Carousel House discussion, I did want to just bring us back to the restoration project that began last year. Our animals are in Marion, Ohio with Carousels and Carvings, Inc. They specialize in historic carousel renovations, and they have sent us several updates. I actually got to speak with them on the phone for a little while today as well. Our animals are in good hands, and they've been focusing on the restoration of the actual animals. We've contracted with them to also restore the mechanical components and the deck and the rounding boards of the carousel. But they've been focusing their efforts first on the animals. At this point, they have stripped and sanded and epoxy encapsulated all of the animals and have primed them and the chariots. That's what they've been working on to this point. And all the figures have been stripped and repaired, and they're working on coating now. You can see this is a really arduous manual process. Each animal's cared for individually. I know we've talked about some of this before, but it really is amazing to watch the progress. An important update is, due to the COVID crisis, Ohio had a lot of shutdowns, and Carousels and Carvings were stopped from work for seven weeks, completely shut down. So that definitely is a challenge that they're going to have to overcome. They're back working, but doing so in staggered shifts and shorter weeks. So they're doing 30-hour work weeks, staggered shifts, and then they've got travel restrictions. And as you know, different situations in different parts of the country. And they have projects that range in different parts of the country. So some of that's really made their typical workflow rather cumbersome, and will add time to how long our project takes. We get to determine what that timeline looks like. We'll have to see what opens up and how quickly things open back up. But I think we're optimistic that it will still align with the Carousel House construction project, which we'll talk about in just a moment. And, but I will, I will point out this little pig over here. He's, he's ready for paint, so they look really amazing. You can see the detail of the muscles and his saddle. It's really, really detailed and pretty amazing. Moving past the carousel restoration, we will talk a little bit about the Carousel House. Obviously, we want to have a showpiece to put this beautiful historic artifact in. We started about this time last year with public input. Spent a lot of time out at public events, did a great survey. We had really good feedback. That led to the development of a mini map plan, looking at what ultimately do we want the amusement area to look like? And in keeping with that, what do we want to do with the carousel? So we had to look at the little bit bigger picture before we could drill down to site selection. That happened in the fall, and as you know, we went with the site that's right next to the YMCA. It's the highest piece of land at the amusement park to really showcase the Carousel House. After we finished the site selection, we were able to work on that schematic design, which is what Clearscapes Architecture presented to you at your council meeting in December. And after we got a thumbs up to move forward, they worked through design development, working through all the details and kind of the nitty-gritty, which led to construction documents, which were complete and went out to bid today, I believe. So construction bidding is underway, and will take about a month. And then there may be some, you know, value engineering and working with the low bidder to see where we go from there. We're hoping to have the construction awarded in the summer by city council, which will lead us to a summer, fall estimated completion of the Carousel House project. We haven't had a great deal of change since you've seen this in December. The, the gold color is really, it's all landscaped area, and I think that did a nice job for contrast. So you could see what the hardscapes around the new construction were versus the landscaped area. I know when I look at construction documents, sometimes that can make my eyes cross a little bit. So this was pretty easy to see. The Carousel House is situated just the way it was the last time you saw it. But the most significant amount of work has really gone into creating the ship from the amusement area to the carousel and making that a little more smooth. They've reduced the number of steps, they're wide monument steps. And now you've got multiple ways in without having to get to the steps. So that, that's been really nice, and I think it will be the difference between grade in the amusement area and the carousel. You'll see the driveway entrance we talked about, combining that driveway entrance to make a real clear grand entry. And you'll see the big carousel right there. All right, next up is layout. The, this is the event space right here. It's modest but versatile. When we did the public input, we had the most interest in birthday parties, but this could also hold staff trainings or corporate events. You could do rentals that include both the event space and the carousel space. You could do rentals in the event space while the carousel is open to the public. There's lots of versatility for that use. We've got three restrooms, a family, women, and men's, and that serves both the Carousel House and the event space. Also have a small catering staging area to serve the event space and then mechanical and storage here in the back.
Rachel, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
The band organ is basically adjacent to the event space.
Yes, sir.
Was there any thought about a, any potential conflict with noise?
Yes. A significant amount of discussion, and Brandon might want to chime in, but there's an AV consultant on the project that's helping us both figure out how to provide for. provide for music and audiovisual in the event space and the carousel space. You can, the idea is to be able to play any kind of music you want over the sound system and then turn that off and let the organ work. They're also working on some techniques to insulate the event space and to push the sound more towards the carousel and then out into the park as well. The idea is you'd have some flexibility to use the organ or not use the organ, to use the AV system. But they've spent a lot of time and thought working through that. Do you want to add on that, Brandon?
I think that you pretty much covered it there. There's a, the AV consultant is giving pretty much guarantee that we're going to get some pretty solid sound disconnect from, from the organ to the event space. They, they've got several methods and means to do that, and you know, they're very well aware of what measures are being designed and what, what can be implemented in the fields and constructability should really be a non-issue.
Unique challenge, for sure.
Harold, Tony is really looking forward to hearing the organ again.
Well, he may be, but people who's going to rent that event space may not be, I can assure you that. So Brandon, I trust you that that's going to be fairly much, I mean, some people, it won't bother at all. It just depends on who rents it for what purpose. And then how that impacts, is it, is it fair to make, to turn it off because you got a vendor there where you get people riding the carousel? You know, it's just something you're going to be dealing with.
Good question.
I think the flexibility will be important, the fact that we could play carousel music over the AV system when the need arises, we can use the organ as it was intended when, when we're able to. That'll, that'll be nice to have some choices, depending on the use at the time.
And Harold, I don't think Tony really likes the organ, so I was, I was teasing him.
I was going to say, we could put the organ back closer to his office here.
And this is the exciting part, that's the updated rendering, which takes into account the difference in grade that has changed since you've last seen this in December, but you'll notice the design has not changed, made some decisions on materials. But ultimately, it's this classic carousel look with the modern glass glazing storefront. The windows are designed, or the doors rather, designed to open, so really it can be an open air facility when the weather permits, or you can close it, and it's a semi-conditioned space, it's not going to be like your traditional air conditioning heat, but there's enough heat to not chill off, so we can use it more year-round than what was capable before.
Is the carousel placed to scale in that? I know one of the discussions had been making sure that the structure, the building structure didn't obscure kind of the natural beauty of the, the full height of the carousel. And it looks like it's, it's a good layout there.
My understanding is that it's to scale, Brandon, do you know?
The, the rendering that you see is based off the like the, the building model that the architect has created.
And they have been in contact with Carousels and Carvings several times about integrating the building with the carousel.
Great.
That is all I have for you, is just an update on progress since December and what to look forward to going forward.
Council questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, I think we, I think Rachel, we probably ought to talk about, a little bit about the numbers for a moment. And I think that's why I wanted to get this discussed today, because this, this is likely to be, this is not included in the budget proposal I'm getting ready to walk into, but it will be an item that comes before you post-July that needs funding, so let's go ahead and just talk about that for just a second, please.
Again, Brandon, chime in if you've got anything to add to this, but we are looking at an estimate of about four million. Of course, when the, the construction bids come back, we'll see what that looks like and where we can work with the builders to, to get to a comfortable place. But at that point, we'll, we'll need to look forward to either transferring funds or seeing if a financing option is what we'd rather explore. I know Peggy's done some research and talked to Harden about what that would look like. And the timeline is feasible for both options.
And I'll, I'll just add to that for a second, I think in some of the recent conversations over the last couple of weeks, as we look at how to, how to work through the, the economic troubles that the coronavirus has caused for us, I think there's a enhanced appreciation for cash on hand and preserving our reserves. So our, our original plan was to pull this out of reserves sometime in the next fiscal year, sometime after July 1st. I think there's some significant interest in is Peggy Reese, our finance director, has researched this, I think that's a wise strategy being recommended by some of the folks that advise us. And so we'll be bringing a package to you where we'll do there's a lot of fancy names we can call it, but it's basically an installment loan program to borrow the four million for this project, which allows us to stretch out the payments over some number of years, but also preserve the cash that we have on hand if things unexpectedly happen over the next fiscal year. Again, you're, I'm getting ready to talk about this in more detail, but the uncertainty of sales tax, the slow pay of property tax, slow pay we're going to see on utility bills. I think there's a sort of universal wisdom across the state, across the nation for local governments to preserve cash, if you can preserve cash, and I think we're going to bring you some ideas, if not in July, certainly in August, maybe July, so we can perhaps get on the calendar, LGC and all this.
Great rates available in there, guys?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, I think we, we lucked out in many ways, I know a lot of our residents regret the fact that the carousel is not available and operational, but in some ways, it wouldn't be anyway right now, so.
Right.
Team moving on this and trying to bring it back to town as soon as possible. All right, anything else from council? Otherwise, we'll move to the most exciting item on our agenda. Item D, our proposed fiscal year 2021 budget presentation, the item you've all been waiting for. Go ahead, Harden.
Thank you, Mayor. So everyone gets to participate with me this evening in my first ever virtual budget presentation, so bear with me. Nolan has agreed to help me advance the slides here. And I do this at the end, but I also want to do it now and offer my appreciation and gratitude to Nolan, Rachel, Bob Patterson, all our finance staff for the great work to do this. Councilmembers, as you know, we began this budget process in January, February, when our department heads gave their submittals, and obviously January, February, what we thought municipal government was going to look like in 2020, 2021 is very different from what we know it looks like today. So kudos to my colleagues, kudos to our department heads for being adaptive. I think I've shared this with some of you individually, but our department heads, we originally set our department budget meetings this year on our normal schedule. And council, if you remember, we normally be doing this, this conversation, the first meeting in May instead of June. But what we end up turning our budget conversations in with the department heads was our, you know, sort of shutdown and retreat plans on how to react to COVID, which the timing was good that we had the time budgeted. But, but, you know, the budget went on a back, a back burner for a moment, and again, just to remind you, the advice we got from the State Treasurer's Office early on in this process was to delay budget completion and your budget work as long as you can, so you have as much knowledge and information as you can from outside sources, be it the state, be it the federal government, be it trying to understand what's going on with the consumerism in our society, so you can make the best budget decisions. And I will tell you, what we know today versus what we knew on May 1st is, is much, much better, we're much better informed and much better prepared. And, and there was a while there, literally every day, we were getting more knowledge that, that helped us put together this document, so. Again, thanks to my colleagues, thanks to our department heads for their patience. They obviously have gotten lots of strange phone calls from me, from Nolan, from Rachel, about what do you think about this idea, or can you do without this? And I'm sure when they saw our phone ring over the last thirty, forty-five days, they wished that it wasn't ringing, so. Thanks to them for their patience and their cooperativeness to get us to this point. So today, our goals are going to work through our preliminary budget recommendations. I'm going to address, time will save time for questions and concerns. And then obviously, we want to get your guidance, your feedback, so we can formulate our final budget proposal, which will come back to you on June 16th at our next city council meeting, and we'll have our formal public hearing process at that time as well. As you know, council members, we have to adopt a budget before June 30th. You do have until June 30th, so if you're not comfortable on the 16th, we need additional time to collect more information. We can certainly punt forward to a special meeting or something like that, but at this moment, we have scheduled to try to have a budget for your adoption and a public hearing on the 16th of June. So I'm going to do the, an overview, and I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. I know it's already 6:39, and we want to keep, keep the meeting moving. So I'll go quickly, and if I skip over something, please stop me and just ask a question, but. So certain, but these, these are some points, sort of our current fiscal year revenue concerns. We anticipate a severe decline in our sales tax revenues from March through June. We also think that will go beyond the current fiscal year into next fiscal year, and we spent a lot of time doing our research, looking at our trends from 2008, 2009, 2010, talking to our colleagues across the state, both at the state level, we sat in on several calls with economists, we sat in on calls with the School of Government, we sat in on calls with the International City County Managers Association, we sat in on calls with Wells Fargo, trying to do our best, our best, get all the best knowledge we can, so we can find a number that we're comfortable with. We're also projecting lower property tax collection rates due to slow payment. As you know, council members, we'll collect it eventually. We have an amazing tax collection division. Danny Van Fleet and his colleagues in the Finance Department do a wonderful job. We eventually collect everything, but it sometimes takes us a while. This is going to be a little bit of a struggle this year, and we've dialed, dialed back our property tax, property tax collection rate accordingly. Utility bill collections, as you know, you've heard us talk about this in the past, are down. The governor has obviously through executive order said you cannot shut folks' water off, we were not planning to do that anyway. But there's a governor's order that reinforces that, that was recently extended, I believe on Saturday, for two more months. And so again, we'll eventually collect those fees, collect those bills, but it's going to be a delay, so it's a cash flow issue for us both here and on property tax. The thing that's interesting about the utility bills that some folks often forget, it also includes our stormwater fees and our sanitation fees. We use those bills to, to bill for stormwater and sanitation, and so not only would we don't see our water sewer revenues, but we'll not see our, some of our stormwater revenues and sanitation fees. So we are prepared to set up collection pro, payment programs with folks when we get to that, as the economy begins to turn and hope for that sooner as opposed to later. And, you know, one of our strategies is to ask folks just to pay something to get, get things rolling on us, and we're practiced in doing that in the past. We also see a delay in our vehicle tax collections, there's a five-month extension on vehicle registration statewide, so that will impact us some. And then obviously, as you know, we've shut down our, many of our Parks and Recreation programs, a lot of our fee-based programs, leagues, sporting, sports, athletics. So there's lost program fees and lost rental fees from renting our facilities as well. So what have we done to try to mitigate that? And again, this is, these are, this, this slide talks about some things we did in the immediate, in the immediate term. So we kicked this into effect as soon as we could in March. And this, obviously, the plan, a lot of this will carry forward as long as necessary, perhaps through July of, July 1st of 2021. So we see this as not only this current fiscal year, but these, these efforts to mitigate also will carry forward through the next fiscal year. And so we started with immediate efforts to control spending, trying to be smart about that, we put a budget freeze on citywide forty days sooner than we normally do that each year, we usually freeze spending towards the end of the fiscal year, we did that forty days early. We froze in twenty-six positions across the city. Those went into effect for this fiscal year and extend again until July 1 of 2021. That's seventeen full-time positions, nine part-time positions, and so those are positions that are currently vacant or will soon be vacant due to a retirement or a planned departure. And so there are some key positions across the city that we're just going to leave vacant, that, so that will, that will impact us. We know there's a price to pay for that down the road. And obviously, we'll ask colleagues in those various departments and divisions to try to step up as we operate, obviously with twenty-six less people than what we think we needed last year. There's a natural reduction that we're seeing in Parks and Recreation with our part-time staff hours there, so essentially that's a furlough. If we're not providing those programs, we don't provide, we don't pay our part-time staff if they're not working. And so we do have quite a number of folks furloughed there, but there is a cost savings, and then we're not paying those folks. We've halted most of our budgeted capital projects, things that weren't yet started, there's a handful that had to go forward, but the vast majority were halted. And we're not, we, as you know, we immediately stopped our non-essential travel, so no employees are traveling without special permission, they're not traveling anywhere outside of Alamance and Guilford, there have been probably on one hand, a number of exceptions to that since March. Typically, that has been to the state capitol. And we've also delayed purchase of Fire Truck Number Six. And council members will recall, half of that was budgeted in this current fiscal year, and half payment of that was budgeted in the next fiscal year. So that's a net savings for two years for us. And we're going to postpone that purchase, so that would not come forward again in a, a budget until the FY 2122 budget. So we think we can, we have two spare trucks, and we're going to do our best to make sure those spare trucks stay in good condition. So if Fire Truck Six has a little trouble in the next year and a half, we've got two spares. That will back it up, and we have a couple of backup plans to that plan as well. So I appreciate the fire department's cooperation and creativity, our equipment services, our fleet division has also been consulted on this, and, and they're going to work hard to help us. That's a net savings over two fiscal years of $750,000. So let me give you an overview, so this is the question, members of the public that are watching, were probably interested to see, there is no property tax increase proposed for this fiscal year. And something that I don't, can't recall the last time I've been able to say this to a city council, is that we're actually proposing a budget that is less than it was last year. So we're proposing a budget that's about $144,000 less than the amount was adopted last year. That's about a quarter of one percent. And so you see that number that we're proposing, fifty-nine million, one fifty-two, four twenty-five. This includes no property tax increase. It includes, it does include a sanitation fee increase that would go into effect January 1 of 2021. And then a second part of that fee, we kind of split that fee into half to try to spread it out across the whole fiscal year. The second half of that fee would go into effect in June 1 of 2021. And then we're also proposing to begin charging fire inspection fees January 1 of 21. Both of these things, things we were looking at before we realized the impact of COVID, and I'll explain why in just a moment, is to fund some programs in each of these departments, and then again, I'll get to some of those details. So our water sewer budget is about $597,000 higher than last year, that's roughly a two percent increase, and again, that's insurance, retirement payroll costs, capital needs. And council members will remember that we have a rate study that a consultant put together for us, and that's a rate study called for us to go up at a minimum 3.2% this fiscal year, and again, trying to recognize the needs of consumers in our community and the lack of dollars that are flowing through the community. We've, we've tried to hold that to two percent this year instead of 3.2, and I think that'll be appreciated, but we do need that two percent to make sure that we can stay caught up with our capital needs. So let me go ahead and get into the details now of the proposed sanitation fee increase. And as I said, that would go into effect, it would be, obviously, council would consider that with the budget adoption in June. It would not, no one would see a change in their sanitation fees until January, again, trying to push that out as long as possible since incomes are a bit challenged now. This allows for fifty cent, fifty percent recapture of our solid waste costs. Currently, our recycling program recaptures about a hundred percent of its cost through our current solid waste fee. This will help offset Alamance County's 5% landfill tipping fee increase. It'll help adjust for some growth and some additional services we've had since our last fee increase, which was in 2008. The services are a little bit different since then, we've added some things, and, and our costs have gone up. One of the things that is a positive for the consumer, for the residents here in the community, is that we're going to propose also eliminating our bulk waste collection fees. So all bulk waste now will be collected at no additional charge all year, and that is indeed a true service enhancement. So our current policy on bulk waste is we have special bulk waste periods, and so people can put out their bulk waste for free during those time periods. And then we race around to try to collect that before the period ends, and our folks have some real spikes in their work volume. It also is a little tricky if you're a citizen, to try to figure out when to put the bulk waste out there. So I think there was conventional, I mean, agreement, consensus agreement from our sanitation staff as well, they They quite honestly wanted to do bulk waste all year to try to balance the workload. I think that's also better for our consumers. Now, if you put out bulk waste outside of our free period, you get charged per bite or per number of times that the, the, the big claw has to pick up your materials. And then we tackle bill, tack something onto your water sewer bill. That would all go away now if you, after a certain number, if you have a large volume, we may still have a fee, but for your basic collection, we're not. So we're recommending a monthly increase of $3.36. That nets out to about 11 cents a day for a household. We would propose to phase that in, again, just trying to ease the burden on our consumers. Phase one would go into effect January 1, which would be half of that amount, $1.68. And then phase two would go into effect June 1, trying to push that out as far as we can into the fiscal year, another $1.68. So the impact for FY 2021 is an increase in revenues of $167,000. And the full, once it goes into a full year, so FY 2122, that would net about $500,000 for the city. Let me move to our other proposed fee change. This is a new way of approaching our fire inspection fees. And again, we would propose this to start in January of 2021. This proposes implementation of a new fee and it varies between $69 and $319 per inspection. We do fire inspections, as you know, across the city on a rotating schedule. Some businesses are on three-year cycles, some businesses, based on the type of business, on a one-year cycle. And we believe in a half year, this is very conservatively estimated. We, the number will probably be higher than this, but we're very cautious about how to estimate this since we've never done this before. We think first year revenue is about $135,000. And in just a moment, I'll explain why we want to propose this fee. But this fee would be charged to everyone who gets a, to get a fire inspection. And the smallest, the 2,500 square foot business would be the $69 range and 319 would be your big box stores over 100,000 square feet. And then there's a scale that slides between that. So there's a whole range of what your fee may be based on your square footage. And we can provide those details if anyone would like to see those. So why are we proposing this? This is an idea. This is a revenue that would offset ramifications of a plan change to the fire department's hourly pay. We're, we're changing the way we calculate our, we would like to change the way we calculate our hourly pay for the fire department from 2,912 hours per year to 2,756. This is the only department in the city where we currently schedule overtime throughout the year. And we're trying to clean some of that up. We had interim HR director Cheryl Brown, council members will remember, gave us a handful of proposals during her interim time here, working with us. And this is one of the lingering pieces of that was to try to fix this overtime situation we had in the fire department. And this is a way to fund that correction. So this was requested by the fire department leadership team about a year ago to make this correction from 2,912 to 2,756 and why doesn't changes we've made to how we pay overtime. And that was a study from the Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Government. So one of the things that we have done, council members are aware of this philosophy. If, if count, if a department is bringing an idea, that's a cost increase idea, whether it's new services, new staffing, et cetera, we ask them to bring revenue ideas with them. So we met with the fire leadership team back in February of this year. They brought us a proposal, a handful of proposals on how we might raise $135,000 over six months or $270,000 over a year so that we could fund this hourly change. And this was the, the fire inspection fee was the most palatable and seemed the most feasible of the options they presented to us. And so we have brought this forward as a way to help us make that change in the fire department regarding pay. All right, so let me move on now and just sort of talk about generally about the challenges and opportunities we faced. And then I'll, I'll share a little bit more about the general fund and then transition to our other funds. So our challenges this year, we're trying to balance the budget with no property tax rate increase, obviously maintaining the same level of services. I've already mentioned about the, and everybody's lived this for the last two and a half months or so, the unprecedented conditions of COVID-19. None of us anticipated what, what that has meant for us. There's obviously lots of economic and revenue uncertainty. I've already talked about the various tax sources we have and how challenged they are. And then we obviously have what goes on every year in spite of COVID, not, not related to COVID, which is rising cost of our personnel, health insurance, merit increases, retirement system. Council is familiar with our recent change to, from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Aetna as part of a cost savings of trying to get our, get control of these personnel expenses. We think that hopefully saves us a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, if not more. Over time, we'll see how that works out, but we're constantly thinking about this item. This is the one that obviously is a challenge for us each year in balancing the budget. Other opportunities and challenges is proactively maintaining the city's facilities and infrastructure. Obviously, as you have things that are aging, is a challenge. Both fleet and equipment also are along those lines. And we constantly have to be thinking about replacing and taking care of our equipment and fleet as well. Sales tax growth, even more unpredictable than we probably can remember going back, maybe since 2010. Obviously, it was a bit of a challenge, '08, '09, and '10. But since then, probably the most challenging year we've had. That has been our major revenue growth area. And, but I think with limited consumerism, folks are not allowed to buy things, not allowed to shop, certainly has challenged us. And then I think we're all a little worried about the future of big box retailers and we have our fair share of those in the community and we'll see how those bounce back as well. I don't think there'll be any legislative changes this time around, but that's always on our mind, is what may happen on these sales tax formulas across the state. I think now there's so much else going on, that hasn't gotten back on the radar, but that's something that could happen in the future. We don't know, the, the economy is much more of a worry and concern now. Let me talk a little bit about the, our major personnel impacts this year. Already mentioned with freezing 26 positions. So in juxtaposition to that, we do have four critical new position requests. A police evidence technician, and I can share details if anyone's interested. That's a cost of about $39,000. That's a critical area for the police in terms of making sure we have revamped our evidence collection and storage program, a much-needed change and improvement for us. And we feel like there's an additional person needed for that. Building inspector, we have that proposal and we've got some budget cuts. Again, we challenge each department to bring ideas on how to, uh, help get the cost down. Our building inspections department found a grant, workforce training grant to help offset some of the salary in year one and also found some cuts in their budget. So that nets out as a new cost of about $11,000 in year one. Code, you see a code enforcement officer, again, offset by reductions. We're going to eliminate a number of part-time positions, not to bring on one full-time. That nets out at about 21,000. And then we have a transportation planner, that's offset 80% by reimbursement of federal grants, plus a decrease in the transportation MPO budget and that nets out just under $4,000 to the city. And so that's the strategy we've taken when departments are bringing us proposals. We ask them to bring us some cost savings or creative ways to raise revenues. That's the only way we can be sustainable fiscally going forward, as you all know, it would constantly challenge. We're reclassifying one position, not a huge financial impact on that. IT support specialist to IT operations manager. You'll see that in the budget paperwork as that comes out. And we're moving one position, the downtown manager is moving from the BDC to the city of Burlington. There's a net savings to the city in that and it is incorporated into our budget. But we'll have to create a position and that'll be done along with the budget document to create that new position for the city. The cost is already, as you know, has already been taken care of in the past by the funding we send to BDC. And then council has discussed this previously and approved this previously, but we have a contractual arrangement now with the city of Graham, where we're going to handle their communications. That involves four new telecommunications and that's a 100% revenue offset. So every dollar that's spent on that program is recaptured with our agreement to the city of Graham. So it inflates our budget, but it also is offset by the revenue. So there's technically four new positions that we'll advertise and hire. But again, as you know, that is dependent on city of Graham's contract and those positions will, will stay in place as long as the Graham contract exists and they would go away if they were not. Okay, so let me move, and again, so just to remind folks what's in the general fund. Council members are familiar with this, but others that, uh, watching. So when we talk about the general fund, these are the units of service we're talking about here. Sort of our basic services across the city, police, fire, recreation, legal, public works, inspections, transportation, economic development, animal services, IT, HR, finance, engineering, planning, community engagement. And then also pay our debt service across the city for all the general fund items out of this category as well. And before I finish, I will touch on another, a couple of other funds that are specific, that are not general fund and we'll cover those as we wrap up. So the highlights for the general fund, again, we're about a quarter of a percent less total budget than what we council adopted last year. No property tax increase, we'll stay at the same rate, 15.5973 per $100 valuation. So the major impacts that are new costs for us, we have a funding increase for health insurance. As I said, we're trying to control that by changing vendors. We think that's helpful, that kept that number down, but the number still goes up about 293,000. We have a mandated retirement system increase from the state treasurer's office of 346,000. We are proposing this year, the budget team, we're proposing a merit salary adjustment of 1% for all employees. We typically have done 2%. It's been our target each year and it's been one of our primary budget goals. This year, we just felt like that was hard to do with our uncertain revenue situation. So what we're proposing, what I'm proposing is a merit salary adjustment of 1%. The program typically is 2%, so we'll fund that at 50% level. We may make some administrative changes to the program, but it still will be, still be merit-based. And we'll also offer, we'd like to offer our employees a $500 one-time payment to be paid out the second week of August. And we believe that there are some employees, obviously, whose families may be struggling, who may have a spouse that's been laid off or furloughed or have some other fiscal challenges in their home. And this gets that money into their pocket a little bit faster. It gets money into their pocket in the first week of August or second week of August versus having that split up over 26 pay periods. It also does not layer the increase over on next year's budget. So if we did the straight 2%, you would have that 2% carrying forward next year. So, and we do, like I said, we do have a balance at this amount and feel comfortable with this. And Bill, that's a way to try to address the situation for this year. We do see a decrease this year in our linked transit subsidy. And that is thanks to what US Congress has provided through the US Treasury. Our CARES Act funding nets out about $373,000. That will help us eliminate our subsidy. And so that was much appreciated. And that will help us on a, on a one-time, one-time situation here for next year. So we're not to provide our subsidy, thanks to the CARES Act funding that came through. We also have a pretty strong capital replacement improvement program. We've dialed that back quite a bit, but that still is one of the things that does take up some of our dollars. And again, I mentioned, just to remind you, 26 frozen positions and then four critical, brand-new positions for the city. Quick picture on revenues and I've, I've touched on some of this already, but our growth in projected property tax revenue, we do project some growth this year and that's to, due to new development. Even though we have dialed back our collection rate, we do think that there will be more revenue due to some of the growth that we've seen over the last 12 months. So that's a plus. We, we're projecting just under an 11% increase, I mean, excuse me, just under 11% decrease in sales tax. I think the actual number is 10.77% is where we finished up in terms of our sales tax revenue projection. And so council members will remember, we typically see a growth in sales tax, maybe as much as 6%, 8% a year. And so if you think about a decline of 11, that's really, you know, sort of what we're used to. That's really probably 17, 18, 19% less than what we probably would have expected a year ago. And then finally, our building permit revenues are projected to remain consistent at this time. And again, we're very cautious and conservative. I think we do hear some good news anecdotally as we reach out to our developers and builders in the community. We do hear that folks are still moving forward with projects and still have things in the hopper with their architects and engineers and designers and believes that we'll see some things through the year. But we still wanted to be pretty conservative until that actually happens. So continuing on the expenditure side, we do, as you know, our strategy is always ask our departments to be limited. This year was really a different story. The COVID impacts are challenging for us. And so you see minimal new items and new programs. And as I've mentioned a couple of times, we ask folks to show an offset cut or revenue enhancement if they brought some new expenditure item. And so not to be repetitive, I think I've covered all these before, but we've got a handful of new positions. Some merit ba, merit-based pay adjustments, the one-time pay, one-time payment, health insurance funding. We got the mandated state treasurer's office contribution increases. And then we have a handful of maintenance and service contracts on utilities that always drive up some of our expenditures. Real quickly, you'll recall this capital sheet has looked longer in the past because it has been longer in the past. But we have dialed this back much more than what you see in the typical year. And so we're just obviously pushing some of our needs to the future. And we'll see what happens as we get through the fiscal year. But you see a handful of items here, dump truck, side loader truck, a small bus to replace an old van in recreation, 14 police cars, our $900,000 for street resurfacing, which is the amount we have done the last couple of years to continue our resurfacing program and try to keep our streets in good shape and try to stay ahead of the curve. You see computer hardware, the rail system upgrade is an IT item that has nothing to do with the railroad. It's an IT item we need. You see a fairway mower and then some other vehicle replacements across the city. And then here is a quick snapshot, I'm not going to read through this, but council members, you have this in your packet. This is the overall source of all our revenues and then what our each department budget looks like across the city. Move forward from there and then you'll see that displayed graphically. Again, I'll just highlight our largest category is the real property tax. In the sort of purplish-blue there is our largest category, followed by sales tax in the aqua color at about 12 million. And then our state shared tax is about 5.6 down there in the purple. And then finally, I'm going to go through the general fund revenue sources. And you'll see, I'm not going to read this sheet as well, but it's provided as background material to everyone who's interested. And you'll see that lists all, where, some of the things I've just tried to recap in the slides. So let me move on to the next graphic and I'll just highlight the three largest areas. Again, at the bottom on the expenditure side, you'll see police at 17.7 million, public works at 8.4 million on the right-hand side in brown, and then the fire department in the lavender shade there at 8.8 million. And I think I got, actually, I apologize, council members, I just realized those graphs followed the wrong chart. So I apologize for that, getting us out of order. So the graph should have been in reverse order. Because I hope that was not too confusing. All right, we'll move on to the water resources fund and a handful. These are the six divisions of the water resources group. Sewer, the repair and construction group, the plants and facilities labs, composting, customer service and billing, and then debt service make up the water resources group. You see the budget is about 30,216,407. It's about, it is a 2% increase in water sewer rates and it's following guidance from our rate study. Part of the, the main need here is to offset inflation. It also allows attention on, on capital improvements. And again, we want to make sure we stay ahead of the curve on that. The average residential customer increase would be 90 cents per month for a customer that uses 5,000 gallons of water and sewer per month. And again, what's included in this, as I've mentioned before, our, some of our larger increases, our health insurance, funding our OPEB, other pension and employment benefit, post-employment benef, post-employment benefits, and then our mandated retirement contribution increase from the state treasurer. So in terms of water usage and sewer usage, we protect that at flat. And like I said, mentioned before, 2% increase in water sewer rates. So key expenditures in the water resources fund, we funded all our capital requests from the department this year. Again, trying to stay ahead of the curve and maintain our important infrastructure. So you'll see an East Burlington wastewater treatment plant, primary sludge mobile press to help with some of our process improvements that are needed at East Burlington wastewater plant. Our water sewer master plan is underway and you'll be hearing some more about that through, through the next year, about some of the things that will come out of their work and they're, they're off to a good start. Waterline replacements at Greason Road and then two-inch water lines, little Alamance Creek of a 21-inch sewer interceptor rehab, backwash pump replacement at McIntosh Water Plant, and then our other employee-related increases that I've mentioned. And so the planned major improvements, again, we kind of rehash some of these, but also inflow and infiltration reduction. The advantage of doing that work to keep the stormwater out of the sanitary sewer system helps us lengthen the capacity, lengthen the life of our system. We can keep those flows out of our sewer plant volumes, then it keeps us from having Then it keeps us from having to do an expansion as we have growth, and so we can buy time by keeping that storm water out of the sanitary sewer system. You also see some two-inch waterline replacements, a handful of other items, mixers, valve actuators, and backwash pump. Purpose, again, I mentioned the primary sludge mobile press that will help us with some process improvements that are much needed, and then some six-inch sewer line replacements. And then here is the overall water resources fund budget by category. You can take a look at that and let us know if you have questions in the future. And in that graphically displayed, you'll see the largest category is down at the bottom in purple, which is our sewer revenues. And then the lavender color is our water revenues, about eleven point seven million. And as a reminder, our largest customer is the city of Greensboro, and they they're projecting their payments to us a little over two million next year. And then in terms of the water resources expenditures, we do, water is broken out separately at the bottom in purple at about seven point three million. Sewer is in the green color there, about ten point one million. And then we have shared resources across the department that obviously is the largest part of this, about nine point eight million. And again, just real quick on the rates, about two cents per day is what that two percent increase would net out for a twenty-five-hundred-gallon customer, and for a five-thousand-gallon customer, it'd be about three cents a day increase. Let me pivot now and begin a discussion of a new fund, a different fund, not water resources fund, but the transportation fund. That's primarily the linked transit program. It's just a reminder to everyone that started about four years ago, we just celebrated that not long ago. It's been an amazing success for us, and through April twenty twenty, we had three hundred fifty-two thousand riders on linked transit in four years. And just a reminder, and Mike None will not let me do a presentation unless I remind everyone that the goal is to be clean, be safe, and be on time. And they do a wonderful job at all three of those, and we're really proud of the linked transit team, and especially for our drivers. And thinking about a time like this, as drivers are doing great work with what they do each day and and putting themselves a little bit at risk as they're making sure that our system operates, so those who need transportation can get it to get where they're going. We do have a one-time capital expense this year, three hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks and shelters. We're anticipating bus replacement purchases at about six hundred thousand dollars as our fleet is aging out, and we're going to keep that on a cycle so we can stay ahead and keep our equipment in good shape. So you see, the total budget here is two point eight five nine million. And then typical federal funding in this transportation fund for linked transit is eighty percent for capital and fifty percent for operations. And so again, it's a one-time occurrence, but the FY twenty twenty-one, we have the CARES Act funding. So we're going to be able to fund both capital and operations at a hundred percent, which, as I mentioned a moment ago, is going to save about three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars in subsidy for the city. And that's a one-time, so we'll have to scramble with that next year and figure out how we go forward next year. But we'll worry about that in six or eight months or so. Let me pivot to the stormwater fund, no change in the rates, the rate's seven dollars per month per customer. We have about twenty-four thousand five hundred customers that both post-budgets one point seven million. Highlights this year, and obviously, this got, this department got a lot of attention in the last years. We had a lot of conversation about flooding in neighborhoods and drainage. But what, just a reminder, everybody, what happens here is we're obviously trying to reduce the discharge of pollutants into our streams. We're trying to map the city's storm drainage system to eliminate illicit discharge and trying to get our handle on that, and then have public education and outreach, and then as council knows, excuse me, we're looking forward to some projects in the in the future as this fund matures a little bit. And then finally, there's a handful of other funds that the city is responsible for that need to be broken out separately. And I won't go through the the whole list, but from just a handful of different funds includes our NPO transportation group, and then some other specialty areas, our water capital reserve is one of the largest there, community development block grant fund, and then our home program, our rental rehab program, our rehab loan program, are included in these other funds. And then finally, let me just wrap up with, just to share a few general comments, and then we'll open the floor to council questions or comments. But some of the fundamentals and best practices that we're trying to do, and I've emphasized this as you've heard me talk tonight, and in our day-to-day conversations about budget. But fiscal sustainability is important for us. It's a challenge for every community, quite honestly, across the country. And this, I would have written this before COVID hit, so I would have written this in January or February, but it has become a regular component of our department conversations. And so what we're telling our departments again, bring revenue ideas, bring savings ideas if you have a new need or a new service. And because the dollars are just not there as we try to manage our personnel cost increases and our inflationary increases pretty much eats up any revenue growth that we may have. The other sort of fundamental best practices are capital improvement planning. We're trying to be smart about that, and as you all know, we kind of have that as an ongoing, constant conversation across the city. And then, as I mentioned, at the tail end of the carousel house conversation, I think one of our new fundamentals and best practices is going to be to strive to preserve, strive to preserve our cash. There's going to be, there is uncertainty, and there will continue to be uncertainty probably as far as we can see into the future right now. And so those with a good cash position are going to be best poised to handle that. And then the good news, too, even though we've had this fiscal crisis, we are able to fund our OPEB contributions. We started that program last year, and so that's other post-employment benefits. And that's something credit rating analysts obviously are looking for us to do. The Government Finance Officers Association is looking for cities and counties to be taking care of this. We have been able to afford about fifty percent of what we did last year in this year's budget, so we're at least making a contribution, which I think will be respected and appreciated by those who are watching us, the analysts and auditors that are watching us. And then so looking forward is we're looking, you know, program-based budgeting. I think we stalled this year due to some staffing changes, and then obviously, our focus area got pivoted to COVID-related cutbacks. But it is something that we want to do, some program-based budgeting in recreation and parks, and hopefully, I can report some progress to you by this time next year. And that'll lead us into the next point, which is to begin to more fully utilize the priority-based budgeting principles. We have done that whether we knew it or not, as we looked hard at cuts we needed to make going into COVID. But where are the, what are the things that are really important, and that's where the dollars need to continue to go? And let's not do the things that don't seem to be as important. It seems like a sort of a, of course, we do that, but it's been a good reminder that those principles have a lot of value. And then we're going to continue to seek delivery partnerships into the future. So in the past year, we have the example of working with the city of Graham on telecommunications. I think that's a win-win for Graham and for city of Burlington. We're going to continue looking at those as ways to, a save money, as ways to look at having other folks help us provide service. Maybe we can get a better service, but we're going to continue to examine that, and the city's had a good history of that. And then finally, one of our goals is to write and adopt fiscal policies using our financial advisor, Davenport, and that'll help prepare us for some future rating analyst scrutiny, but just helps us generally just sort of do a checkup on ourselves as well. And so let me wrap up and then open the floor for questions and just thank our budget team, Peggy, Noel, and Rachel and Bob, all of the finance staff that helps Peggy, but also keeps the ship afloat so Peggy can dedicate all of her time to budget in our, you know, sort of the the first two quarters of each year, it seems like. And then all of our department heads who have shown amazing flexibility this year and amazing patience, probably not to just to get mad or get discouraged. And we certainly appreciate that because we have certainly had challenges for for all of us. So and then council members, thank you for your support. I know we've had some individual conversations, appreciate your encouragement and guidance. Again, this has been more challenging than any budget we can remember probably since, again, probably two thousand and ten or so. But thank you for your guidance and your leadership. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will yield the floor back and see what questions.
Before we do questions, in our normal physical meetings, if we've been in meeting for about two hours, we usually do a bio break. And so I'm going to ask if council is amenable to take about a five-minute break to let folks stretch, use the restroom if they need to, and then we'll come back and do Q and A for the budget and then resume our agendas. That sound amenable to council members? All right, so we will take a break now and resume at approximately seven twenty-five. All right, we'll give folks another minute or so to resume and come back in. All right, if folks could start unmuting themselves and putting their cameras back up. All right, resuming, it looks like we've got everybody. All right, we're going to go ahead and move back into Q and A following Harden's budget presentation. Are there any council questions?
I would just like to to make a comment. First of all, thanks to the staff for, I know, the time and effort and this challenging situation to put this budget together. I appreciate, and it goes all the way down throughout the departments, too, because everyone had to be involved in this. I also would would think that this is a situation where unfortunately, no one expected, but but it's upon us. And unfortunately, we're not sure when it's not going to be with us. So our concepts in terms of management, I think, has to be flexible. I want to give the staff credit for certainly any consideration of financing the carousel project with the interest rates now. I think that's a very wise, very wise business move. What what I would ask, though, is that I certainly understand the five hundred dollar one-time payout to the employees, which had been used previously in very challenging situations. And the one cent merit is very conservative. But what I would, I would ask us to consider is to potentially put off the one percent merit and consider that as we go into the two thousand twenty-one year, and it's for a couple of reasons. By, as we go through the first quarter and the second quarter of two thousand and twenty, twenty-one budget or the third and fourth quarter of the actual year itself, we should get more ideas in terms of where our economy, the progress of where it may be going. Also, as we get into the fall and really late summer, we will get a better projection of what our sales revenues, sales tax revenues have been in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, where we are now as we end up the present fiscal year in terms of our financial position. If we wait to consider a merit increase in January or February, it will also give us an opportunity to get our audit in to give us an idea of where we were entitled at that point. But also certainly, I think economically, we'll be able to begin to see what kind of recovery or the process of recovery, and we all hope we got one coming, that we will see beginning late summer, certainly into the fall, and as we get into the holiday season. Late summer, certainly into the fall and as we get into the holiday season. To give us a much better idea of the revenue concept that we're looking at. You will also get back to what they went hard and indicated. To see if indeed our, our developers are looking at additional projects for our community. And it was simply, I think, be the, the appropriate thing to do. I had probably gotten those personal relationships as anyone with city employees, but. There's a lot of people out here now that have lost their jobs that are struggling and I'm not sure if. If, if we should not wait until the beginning part. January, February of 21 before we would consider. Any type of merit program at this time. No problem of going ahead with a one time $500 payout. It can solve a lot of issues. I've seen that happen in the past with employees. But that's just something they thought that I have on this.
Thank you, Harold, for those comments. Other comments or questions from council members?
I just, I would like to reiterate what Harold said. I agree completely with him on every piece and. Some of the data that we were provided by the, the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council showed what other municipalities are doing. You know, 66% of other municipalities looked at a pay freeze, a reduction in force, not just a hiring freeze, but a reduction in force. Furloughs for full time staff. Wage reductions or reduced benefits. So we've fortunately with everybody's help and with everybody's assistance, we've been able to. Look at that and. Nearly 31% is not going to give any increase at all. So I agree with the, the one time bonus. Specifically for the, the. Employees that we have, but that's going to make a significant difference. Even before COVID and before we. Sort of had to look at our budget uniquely different. I have been enormously concerned about two pieces. In our CAFR every year on page 17, there's a little narrative and. It basically, what the accountants basically tell us is you can tell the financial health of your. Your governmental statement, the governmental side of your statement by the, by measuring your net position. And our net position has decreased every year since 2016 from 122,000 to 118 to 97 to 93. And we have added an enormous amount of legacy costs from a standpoint of personnels and. Personnel expenses and that's the expense that keeps going. And then if you look at statistically, if you look at our. Fund balance, we've, we've really hit that thing pretty hard. We made, we made almost $6 million in budget amendments this past year through seven months. So our fund balance has completely de- continuously decreased. And our budgets grew at a pretty enormous rate and our net position has decreased. So take COVID out of the situation, out of the equation. We've, we've got to be a little bit more conservative in our approach and, and a little bit more creative on how we fund things. In Harden's presentation, he said that, that we want to work with Davenport to write and adopt physical fiscal policies. You know, one of the things that I would love to see us have is a fiscal policy is a fund balance policy. And I don't know. Harold, if you've got any thoughts on this and your travels and working with the league, I'm sure there are other municipalities that have. A pretty strong and disciplined fund balance policy. But, but even when you look at, at this particular budget. We've got through, through insurance changes, which is personnel through the LGETS, the mandated rate change personnel through the FD calculation of hours for the fire department. Personnel, if you look at the one time bonus, the merit increase, if it was in there, the other personnel expenses that are not offset. It's about $1.5 million in this budget, just in this one budget and we've. We've had some. Reprieve on that by the 26 positions of 755,000, but that's a freeze. We didn't eliminate those. That's a freeze. So that was coming back as we start refilling those positions. You know, if you told me you were going to eliminate those positions, that's a different narrative. But we, we've added $1.5 million that we had, some of it we had to, we didn't have a choice, unavoidable. But we froze 755,000. So we really have to take a look at this thing. I'm concerned. That we're not in a V recovery, we're in a U recovery, and I think it's going to get better quick and then it's going to get worse. Everything I read says that there's a wave of economic impact coming. I'll have to say, I'm not a fan of the inspection fees for the fire department. I think that. Businesses have been overburdened tremendously. You know, we can't even get them all open as a, as a total government, federal, state and, and local. Quick enough and, and you know, we're asking them, hey, we're going to, by the way, you got these other fees we're going to throw at you. We need to be very. Cognizant of that. And I think it's a bad timing to do that. I think it's a, could, could be a good idea, but I would prefer to see it. Maybe after the first of the year, take a look at it or, or down the road too, but we've got to do something to make businesses. See that we care as much about that side on the economic development piece. As anything else, but. I just think we've got to be a little more conservative than what we're looking at and. I'm, I'm just concerned about certain things prior to the crisis that we're in and, and that's only sort of putting a magnifying glass on.
Thank you, Jim. Other council comments?
I've got a question, Mayor, and in terms of your proposal, Harold, are you, are you saying just take out the 1%? Or in, in, you know, totally and take a look at it, you know, come first of 2021? Are you saying that we think we go ahead and leave some in, you know, be effective? 2021, in other words. Maybe you can make, I don't know, maybe, maybe if you could explain it to me again, I.
Bob, what I would, I, I, I think. We could do either one. If we, if you go ahead now, even if you. If you budgeted, you would only budget. A maximum of six months of that number compared to a full year. You were certain you would cut that in half. And then, then I think still we, that would be. Have to be addressed in terms of where the economy is, where we are in terms of if we go forward or not. And, and again, this is. Not taking anything away from our employees who do a wonderful job, but. There, as a community, we're in pretty good shape, quite frankly, compared to what I see across the state now. Jim's comment about a fun. Reserve plan or reserve policy, there are some wonderful policies across the state. What used to be a small town, but now it's a growing town called Waxall down in the Charlotte area. That puts together, I thought, a really classic plan. And, and they've done a really nice job with theirs. But there's other plans also, and of course, this can depend on various concepts. Each city is different. What their needs are and also what their responsibilities are. You know, I have no idea what the economy is going to do personally, if I did, you know. Doing something, but I do believe that. We have to look our citizens in the face. I mean, we heard earlier tonight about the housing issue and. The number of people that's in a poverty situation. And, and that kind of even reinforced my thoughts is that it's just not the time, I think, to. I think we'd get a real hard look at next time we do a pay increase and maybe we can do something again. Possibly in January or something of that nature, but it, it might not just be the time right now to do it for the full year.
Mayor, if I could, let me make a further comment. I. I quite frankly would like to see is, you know, and I'm, I'm in favor, first of all, of the $500. I think that's good. I think it's. I think it's deserving. I think it's the right thing to do and I would like to see at least half of this. Money stay in the budget so we could, it'd be in place come January. 2021. That's, that would be my feeling on, on the issue.
Thank you, Bob. Kathy, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, just following up on that, I was just thinking, I, I think that's not a bad proposal because it, it's cautious. But I think that we'd have to revisit that in December. So we were ready to, you know, put a time certain on it that we were going to come back to it and address it. Again. Because, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball and nobody does.
And I'll say, I mean, I appreciate Harden doing the, the legwork to look at some of the other communities. And what they're doing as far as merit pay. I say, I believe that we should do the 1% and that we should do it in the, the manner proposed in the budget. And I think that's because we have amazing city employees who have not missed a beat in this pandemic. Who as soon as we had to respond, they were there and they were putting in the hours and. I know their families are going through a lot and I think it means a lot to the community that those folks are still dedicating themselves and their time. To our city. And so that 1% is scaled back from where it normally is. And I think it's critical for us to be able to keep people who really love this community. And love what they do for our city and really want to see our city pull through to say thank you to them, to help them stay committed. And to make sure that we still have the best people doing the best work for our community. So I would like to see us. Do that 1% and do it for the full year.
What did we do last year? What did we do last year?
Our, our typical goal, Mr. Butler, is 2%, a 2% merit program for the full year. And obviously that, so what's different here is 1%. Plus the $500.
The 1% plus the $500 is really close to 2%?
It's probably 75, 80% maybe, 80% Peggy, would you say? But 80% of the cost of a 2%?
To be in the same.
But the $500 being a non-continuing cost versus a percentage merit. So that's a big. To your, your budget conversation is what's continuing versus what's a one time.
Yeah, that doesn't add to our problem we got to solve this time next year. Right, the lower the percentage doesn't add to your challenge for next year.
Correct. And, and plus we, we're, we are delaying a lot of things that we're going to have to do regardless. So. To Harold's point, we need to be really cautious about this economy and what we're doing. And there's a lot of people, there's, I don't know what it is, 20, 25, 30 million people unemployed. We, we just got to be sensitive to the community and, and everyone that's, that's had to. Work through this. I would still like to see us take a look at it in January.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if I try to synthesize some of the things I'm hearing, so maybe we could. Mr. Ward suggested leave it in, leave 50% of the number in the budget. Proposal, pull 50% out and obviously we could just revise backward our sales tax projection. And then maybe we could bring council a report at the end of the first quarter. Which would have us, we could do that. At the September work session or the October work session. Bring you a report of what we're seeing going on in the, maybe we just do that in the September work session, which would be two thirds of the way through the first quarter. Bring council, our view of what, what we're seeing. Peggy will obviously be diligent in doing her research and as all of us will. And then may, just as an update with no action, but then perhaps bring. A more definitive, you know, kind of a circuit breaker toggle switch, if you will. At the December work session, as Mr. Owen suggested, let's take a look and then that could be the moment for a toggle switch. Of whether the merit increase goes forward or not. I'm, I'm just throwing that out as trying to synthesize what I'm hearing.
I, I'd like that for two reasons also. It will give us an opportunity. To determine even if we look at it in September. Where we are in terms of property tax collections, because that's a big part of this is. July and August, is it not Peggy?
We get a big chunk because there's a half percent discount. So all. Loans that are escrowed, the bank's fiduciary duty is to pay that by August 31. So we get a big chunk. Then, and then we will get the remain, another big chunk at the end of the year before January 5th. When interest and penalties start going into effect.
Right, go.
Quick question, Mayor. Are we all, you know, of like mind on the $500 one time payment? If I'm hearing it correctly, I think we are.
He's in favor of that.
I'm certainly in favor of it.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of that, yes.
All right, well, I'm, I'm amenable to, to Harden's suggestion to do a check back after the, our first quarter, not to be confused with calendar first quarter.
Yes, correct.
All right, any, Jim made a lot of points. Any, any further discussion on any of those? I, I think having the, the fund balance discussion and policy is, is a really important one. And something we should definitely continue to work on, not necessarily applicable just to this budget, but I think over the next time period. Jim, do you have a? A time period you'd like to see us have something together?
Well. I, I hope everybody understands the seriousness of a shrinking net position. And, and we've hit fund balance pretty hard. Now, some of that is, is, was expected, you know, it's not that we've. I don't want anybody to think we've just thrown, thrown caution to the wind. You know, we've hit it really hard, some of it like, like Fire Station 6 for us. That was a. And we've had some other big projects, some things at North Park, things like that, that we've, we've really hit this thing to. And we've done a lot of good things for the city, but sooner or later, no matter how. Good you are, if you're spending more money than you're bringing in and you're going into your savings account to do that, there's the day of reckoning and. And, you know, I'm, I'm fortunate, we're fortunate that we had enough in there to really not have to worry about. Budget shortfalls, but Harold will tell you, there's a lot of counties and cities out there, municipalities right now. That don't know how to balance their budget. They don't have that luxury. And, and they've certainly been thrown a curve ball. So if we're serious about it and to Harden's point, if, if that's a goal from Davenport is to write. Policy that helps us be more fiscally aware of what we're doing, then yeah, I would like to see that pretty quick.
I would like to add that we currently do have a fund balance policy and we will certainly look at what others are doing right now, but currently our current fund balance policy says that we will keep. Four months expenditures in our, all of our fund balance. So I just want to. Let council know that we haven't been operating without one.
Yeah, but that one's antiquated. We do know that. That one goes back pretty long time.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I think it's important to revisit that just to, to look at functionally how it works in our current environment. So that's a good, very good point, Jim. So we'll plan. Do we want to see that on? A work session agenda, probably give staff a little bit of a break, maybe July or probably August.
We could shoot for July.
Do we have a work session in July since we?
It may be fourth of July holiday, so we tend to bump that maybe to the second week or not have one that month. And then August tends to be a light agenda, but we can all zoom meeting from wherever we're having our staycations, so.
We could also bring the report out of regular council meeting in July.
Yeah.
I mean, since we're on a different format now anyway, if that's. Pleasure, please pleasant to the council, we could do that at the second council meeting in July.
It's amenable to me. It works for everybody else.
It's fine. It's fine, yeah.
Good.
All right. Any other items on the budget presentation? All right. Well, thank you, Harden. Thank you to staff on. Well, thank you, Harden. Thank you to staff on all that work. As you mentioned at the end of your presentation, that takes a lot of effort this year. It took twice as much effort because you effectively wrote two different budgets. And so we really appreciate everything that went into that. Um, we will move on now to item E on our agenda, discussion of annexation requests thirteen fifteen, uh, Elrato Street and thirty-six fifty-nine Maple Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt for a moment on the, uh, just for those of you that are not at City Hall, in case something happens, there seems to be some issue with the power. Here at City Hall, it's flickering on and off. I just noticed the air conditioning has stopped. So I'm not sure if we're on generator or what's going on, but if you lose us, those of us who are at City Hall will work favorably to get back on somehow, some way. We're okay for now. But if we all disappear, that's, there's some issue with the power here in the building.
All right. So that being noted, uh, we will attempt to move on to item E and recognize Principal Planner David Beal at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, part of the request process for utility services outside the city limits involves an annexation agreement. And if utilities can be provided, the City of Burlington Utility Connection Request Procedure requires all eligible parcels to be forwarded to City Council for annexation consideration. And should the council choose annexation, a public hearing would be required in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes one sixty-eight dash fifty-eight. The first request tonight, we have two. The first is for thirteen fifteen Elrato Street. And this would be a satellite annexation. Now, for a little background on this request, the owner requested both water and sewer service to the property. Staff has reviewed this application. The request was approved by the city manager per section forty dot forty of the city's code of ordinances. The annexation agreement received as part of this retail, utility request, it has been certified and it is within the council's purview to consider annexation of this property. For this property, water and sewer service can reasonably be provided. And other city services such as sanitation, police and fire could be provided at a cost. There is a voluntary satellite annexation report. I believe it's on the screen now included with your packet. This parcel is nine hundred and thirty feet from our current city limits. And again, should annexation be considered, a date of public hearing would need to be set and advertised. Now I'm going to refer to this voluntary satellite annexation report. The estimated net cost to the city to serve this property would be $570.49 for the first year with subsequent yearly costs, uh, netting $347.11. I'd like to point out that the service cost estimates do not include the variables of police and fire response calls. And this would increase the city's service costs by $295 for police and $953 for fire for each response. In addition, there's a one-time debt service payment that would be due to the faucet volunteer fire district of $223.38. Uh, as far as a recommendation, the staff has considered numerous factors in evaluating this property thirteen fifty Elrato. Uh, and a few issues do stand out. First, the projected property tax revenues do not offset the projected service costs. Second, there is the unknown variable factor of police and fire calls, which would significantly increase that negative offset. Thirdly, this is a satellite annexation, uh, and it, there is a fixed percentage of contiguous city limits. What this means is we have a limited amount of capacity available to use for satellite annexations. Now, we're not near that limit now, uh, but it, it should be noted that small individual parcels could potentially add up to make a larger satellite annexation request not possible in the future. And lastly, satellite annexation would result in an isolated service area without the ability to provide that uniform and logical service provision in that entire area. So based on these factors, staff would recommend that the, that council defer the annexation consideration of this property at this time and reserve the right to consider the petition in the future, uh, per the terms, which is twenty-one years of the voluntary annexation petition submitted by the owner. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have about this request before moving on to the next.
Any questions from council?
Um, I just, I do want to ask a question. Has this property been subdivided? Is that, the, the way the map shows that you have a parcel number here and I went out there today and there's a, a house on this property. And I'm presuming, uh, I wish I had a pointer that I could show. But there is a house, I think it's adjacent to this property. And that it would be a common driveway, is that?
That's correct. This is a subdivided portion of that larger parcel. This is a remainder one point one six acre parcel. And I believe the, the map on the screen now shows that, uh, there is that long drive serving the neighboring property. Uh, but the one in question now actually, uh, has yet to have a residence on there. I believe that is a, an old storage, uh, trailer on that property now. But the, the one outlined in blue is the one in question.
Okay.
No questions?
Okay. Uh, moving on, the second request before you tonight would also be a satellite annexation. This property is located at thirty-six fifty-nine Maple Avenue. A little background on this request, the owner requested water service only to the property. Again, staff reviewed this application and the request was approved by the city manager, uh, for service per section forty dot forty of the city's code. An annexation agreement was received as part of this request. It has been certified and it is within the council purview to consider annexation of this property. Now for this property, water and sewer can reasonably, reasonably be provided. And the other city services, uh, sanitation, police and fire could be provided at a cost. There is a voluntary satellite annexation report included in your packet on this. This particular parcel is approximately four thousand three hundred forty-four feet from our current city limits. And again, should you choose to consider annexation, a date of public hearing would need to be set and advertised. But I'll go back to that voluntary satellite annexation report again. And the estimated net cost to the city to serve this property would be a hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents for the first year. And subsequent yearly costs would net three dollars and thirty-six cents. Again, the service cost estimates do not include the, the random variables of police or fire response calls, which would increase the city's costs, uh, by either two hundred ninety-five dollars per police call or five, excuse me, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars per fire call. There would also be a one-time debt service payment to the EM Holt Volunteer Fire District, um, and that's approximately a hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-four cents. As far as a recommendation for this property, again, staff considered numerous factors evaluating this property, uh, thirty-six fifty-nine Maple Avenue. And the same issues stand out for this one. Firstly, the projected property tax revenues do not offset the projected service costs. Again, there are those unknown variables in police and, of police and fire calls, which would increase that negative offset. Thirdly, this would be a satellite annexation and there is a fixed percentage of contiguous city limits, uh, available to us for such annexations. And then lastly, being a satellite annexation, this would result in that isolated service area uh, without the ability to provide uniform and logical service provisions. So again, on this one as well, based on these factors, staff would recommend deferring annexation consideration of the property at this time and reserve the right to consider the petition in the future, uh, per the terms, twenty-one years of the voluntary annexation petition that was submitted by the owner. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions on this one as well.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from council on this one? All right. And David, clarify the request to council is to add these to the agenda for tomorrow's meeting?
That's correct. This would be added, um, to the agenda with the, uh, I believe the, excuse me, just a second. Looking for the statement. I had everything up on my screen and they, they all shrunk down. So just a moment, please.
Is it a regular agenda item or a consent?
It would be, uh, it would be a consent.
It's on the screen now, Ben.
Okay. It would be a consent add-on agenda. Thank you, Nolan. Um, requesting that these items, you would take them individually, be added on the consent item uh, agenda to defer the public hearing and consideration of the applicant's petition for annexation to a future time pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes one sixty-eight fifty-eight. Uh, also Burlington City Code, section forty dot forty, and the terms of the annexation agreement executed by the applicant, the city and filed in the register of deeds.
Very good. So any questions from council on that? Otherwise, if we have consensus, if I could see folks raise your hand if you're amenable to this being included on the consent agenda tomorrow to defer that. Okay. That looks like, uh, unanimous consent. David, anything else you want to add on that?
No, sir. Uh, staff's available for any questions should they come up between now and tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. All right. We will move on to item F on our, uh, agenda, which is the traffic commission recommendation for the Main Street and Front Street intersection. And we'll recognize Director of Transportation, Mike Nun.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm gonna share my screen. It's best you have this information in your pack as well, but we'll just go refresh. Back through this, we actually discussed this, if I recall, in November or December, when the traffic commission, they actually handled this at their November two nineteen meeting uh, and discussed, uh, an always stop at Front Street and Main Street. As you can see, hopefully you can see on my screen there, a, a three-way stop, if you will. All approaches would have stop control, uh, installed, uh, and also have the advanced warning. This was requested, uh, internally by staff and also in conjunction of working with the business owners downtown in this immediate area for the traffic commission meeting. We did not have any negative feedback. Uh, we had very positive feedback, pedestrian safety, uh, slowing of traffic, uh, and just general making that area more, as I said, pedestrian friendly. As you note, the historic depot is across the street. Uh, the beer works and other, uh, shops are around, uh, that immediate area. Uh, so this, the traffic, traffic commission approved this unanimously, supported it, um, to install. Before I stop, I just want to also add on the additional item, which is the second item. If this were to be done, the traffic commission also recommends, uh, moving the current loading zone or excuse, changing the current loading zone. It's rare in front of Danny's, uh, and I can show you that location. Uh, that's in the blue there. If that's coming up on your screen. Currently it's a loading zone. To see, uh, with the stop locate, stop condition, you will not need to have that type of sight distance. Uh, if all those, all three approaches are only stop can do.
Yeah, I think we lost you, Mike.
Yeah, I think the point Mike was making is, you know, with, with folks stopping, hitting on, hitting on Front Street, um, you won't need to have the sight lines. So you could actually in, increase the parking on the street by two spaces. And that was another recommendation that the traffic commission made.
Might have mic'd back.
Oh, am I back?
You're back.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, exactly. What Nolan was saying, I could hear Nolan. But yeah, you would not, you know, the sight lines would not be needed. So you would have, uh, the ability to make those into two-hour parking spaces. And so it's really two items that comes from the traffic commission this evening and always stop for front and main. And then the addition of the two, two-hour parking, um, spots.
Very good. Any council questions on that?
How, how, I, I mean, I agree with the, I agree with the request, but the aesthetically, how, are we just gonna, where we gonna put those stop signs? I mean, how is that gonna look?
They're gonna, what we're gonna do, we're gonna have to, uh, overemphasize it as far as education. Um, there's two balancing acts there. Uh, we're gonna have to put some advanced warning and probably some, some type of flagging or initial, um, extra signage. And the signs would have to be possibly larger than we normally use. That's just for traffic safety and pedestrian safety, but we're hoping to use the standard stop sign when, when we get to that point. Uh, there's poles there already in place, uh, to install those stop signs. So we don't believe there's gonna be additional pole clutter. Uh, but there will be, there will be additional signs, uh, just for safety standpoint.
Other questions?
We, I just want to mention, uh, that too. We will, we will have to do some advanced education and warnings and, and publishing of that, not just in the downtown, but just citywide. Uh, so when folks do start coming back downtown with vehicles, uh, they'll see a change. But, uh, and it will be obvious, Mr. Butler, it will be, you know, for a while, it will be obvious. And we, we somewhat want it to be that way.
Yeah.
But I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
I will be honest, I brought this up, uh, about a year ago. I was downtown the, uh, Friday of Elon graduation. I was in the afternoon and, uh, evidently, uh, there was a, a number of Elon uh, families downtown and they were walking, um, up Main Street. Uh, and I was somewhat behind them. And as we got to that intersection, there was cars coming from both ways. The young lady coming from the police department area, uh, looked over, she actually had an Elon sticker and she stopped. The person coming the other way never slowed down. And frankly, I say this and i- i- is that many of our visitors or any of our visitors who are from larger towns, uh, when they visit you, they're used to people stopping for pedestrians. And I, I'll be honest, uh, if we're gonna hope to continue to grow downtown and get people through that intersection and hopefully we'll have additional businesses developed there on those corners. Uh, I, I just think this is something we gotta do from a safety side. I brought up the idea of a stoplight. Evidently that's not practical in terms of the cost and working with, with Duke Energy. But, uh, I, I tell you, it's, uh, I think it's just a pure safety issue. I, is what I see it.
And I'll share, I'm with Harold on this. Having been to many downtown festivals and busy evenings in downtown, this is a, a prime intersection where you see a lot of foot traffic, um, and especially with the families that we have for Fourth Friday coming down. Uh, you see a lot of children, uh, coming across those, those crosswalks. And so I think this is a, a much needed addition to slow traffic down and really help create this safe bridge between our plaza space and, uh, our downtown businesses. I think the, the stop sign's a nice middle ground as opposed to a stoplight that's passive, uh, non-obtrusive. It will be obtrusive as Mike mentioned right away, which will help with education. Uh, but will gradually help turn this into a more vibrant intersection and make sure there's some weird traffic behavior that happens on Front Street, including random U-turns in front of the Paramount. Um, and so hopefully this calms a little bit of that down and gets people to put their eyes on the road and make sure that people stay safe downtown when they do return. Other council comments?
I, I agree, Mayor. And, uh, I would ask, we're going to put it on the agenda.
Do I, if there's no other questions, then I'll ask for consensus. If folks could raise their hand if they're, uh, interested in closing this on tomorrow's consent agenda. Kathy, are you in favor of including this?
I'm just not speaking on this one.
All right. We will include that on tomorrow's consent agenda for, uh, June second.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I'll just add, I think one of the things we got this back off the, you know, so this was sort of put on the table, if you will, to borrow parliamentary word. But what got it off the table and back on the agenda, uh, is obviously thinking about the increased foot traffic we're gonna see on sidewalks, outdoor dining, et cetera. So we're, wanna make sure that folks realize we're doing. One of the reasons we put this back in front of you is trying to be responsive and helpful to our downtown merchants.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on item F? Otherwise, item G, boards and commissions reports. We have no boards and commissions reports. So that's a quick item. And, uh, next will be council and manager comments. Any council comments this evening? I do have a couple that I want to share. Um, so first off, for anyone who followed the, the North Park protest last, yesterday evening, I want to extend a huge thank you to our I want to extend a huge thank you to our Wreckin' Park staff, as well as our police department staff, um, to manager Watkins for attending. It was well-received by the community. We had over three hundred people from around Burlington and Almonds County out there in a very peaceful demonstration, uh, and a coming together. I think it reflects very positively the relationships that we have all built over the past years um, to help bridge racial tensions and divides and work to building a stronger Burlington. And a, a huge thank you to Chief Smythe. Whenever we see, uh, police officer involved deaths and, uh, across this country, we usually see significant unrest and the communities that, whether it best are the communities that have a strong relationship of trust with their police departments. And what you saw last night, um, was a community that, that truly does trust our, our police department and our chief. And we recognize that we're not yet perfect, but we've, we've come a long way. Uh, and so that is just another opportunity for folks to, to build that relationship further, that relationship uh, and be heard, which is incredibly important in these times. So I just want to, to mention that. Um, there's another program that I was sat on a, um, this is different topic on economic development. Um, I sent out an email just, uh, at the beginning of this meeting with a, a document link, and I'd like to do a quick screen share if I can. So Scott, if I can see if this works. There we go. So I included this, uh, NLC KIVA, uh, document to our council members and it's available if anyone else wants to request it. But NLC and Kaufman Foundation hosted a, um, session last week about economic development and particularly, uh, how we reach and support minority-owned businesses, especially in the current COVID economy. They recognized that under normal economic conditions, minority entrepreneurs struggle to access traditional means of capital. And during the COVID economy, minority entrepreneurs are even more stressed and unable to access capital. Um, and so additional work needs to be done. Uh, even programs like the PPP and some of the other stimulus programs were inaccessible to many, um, smaller entrepreneurs and minority entrepreneurs. And so what I want to just kind of pitch out here and not take too much of your time, you can look over this document, um, on your own later, is KIVA's been around for a while. They're a, an organization that helps people basically crowdsource some level of startup capital, so folks can make a contribution and then it becomes a zero percent interest loan that entrepreneurs can use. I think it's about sixty to eighty percent of the entrepreneurs who access these micro loans are, um, minority members of our community. Uh, they've been most active in, uh, some west coast states, but they have been expanding recently across the country. And then, um, what they've got specifically is what they call their hub program. And they're beginning to look for more cities to access this. And I know we've talked about what Peter's been doing with, uh, economic gardening and kind of creating new businesses in the community and how we, we support those in non-traditional economic development focus. Uh, and so this represents a model with, with, I think, some good opportunities for how we can responsibly and legally within the North Carolina climate, um, be a player and help incentivize some of what we've been talking about. Uh, and so in this document, it gives a, a couple of different models about, um, how, let's see if I can get down to that. There you go. So it talks a little about kind of some of the players, the trustee, the hub, the funder. Um, and then how city government can be an actor in those areas. Um, and there's a couple of different case studies in here where the city government takes on all roles. Uh, or where the city government, uh, works in conjunction with CDFIs, uh, or other local entities. This one's from, uh, Fayetteville, Arkansas, where the Walton Family Foundation of Walmart, uh, stepped up to make an impact. And so there's some, some really good models in here where a local government can step in in addition to some other entities, whether it be something like the Almonds, uh, Foundation or the Chamber or other entities and provide for this structure to use the KIVA model. And then the other piece of the KIVA model is friends and family and community members can, can pay in and cities can do like a matching amount. Uh, so dollars get leveraged much further than they would otherwise. And you can see the repayment rates, uh, based on these different models. And what they emphasized was anytime you've got a local government, uh, with, who's building that trust and that cooperation among local entities, your repayment rates go up significantly, uh, which allows you to keep circulating those dollars in, in the community. Uh, and I think, especially with some of the conversations we had yesterday with community members who were asking for how we, we support community leaders of color, uh, and business leaders of color. Uh, this plays right into that along with our long-term focus of economic development. So, um, as I mentioned, I forwarded that out, but I would love kind of council's general consensus to let, uh, staff dig a little further into this and maybe bring a report back to us, uh, in the next couple of months to see if this is an opportunity that would fit our overall economic development package. Any questions from folks?
Would it, would it be feasible to let us take a look over this and then give you some feedback? We can move forward from there?
Yep. All right. Any other questions on that? Stop, let's be and share and let you all read that. Um, and then I have one other item, which is June sixth is a, a recognition, it's for Every Town for Gun Safety, which is in cooperation with Mayors Against Illegal Guns and Moms Demand Action. Those are all organizations that work to, um, promote safety in communities, especially around gun violence. And June sixth is their annual day of recognition to help bring awareness. Uh, and their color is orange and they're asking, um, elected leaders and community leaders to wear orange on that day. Uh, and I know we have recently, in the last couple of years, provided the lighting outside of City Hall with its color options. And I wanted to toss out to council, I know it would take potentially just a, a couple of days for staff to turn those lights over, but I wanted to see if council might be amenable to, uh, allowing us to light up City Hall orange in recognition of uh, the work being done to reduce gun violence in communities.
... and community leaders to wear orange on that day. Uh, and I know we have recently, in the last couple of years, provided the lighting outside of City Hall with its color options. And I want to definitely toss out to council, I know it is taking
I can't hear that.
Any questions?
Is anybody talking? I've heard.
I couldn't hear that.
Okay, I can, I can start over from the beginning. So there's a, on June sixth, it's the annual day of recognition for, uh, Every Town for Gun Safety, Mayors Against Illegal Gun, Guns and Moms Demand Action. Those are all agencies that work together to, uh, promote safety in community, communities, especially around, uh, gun violence. I know we've specifically been talking about that through the Youth Solutions Program, uh, and some of the, the violent murders that we've had in our community. Um, and so what they're asking on that day is for leaders to wear orange to build awareness for the work that they're doing and the work that's still necessary to reduce gun violence in communities. And I was curious if council might be amenable to letting staff, uh, light City Hall orange for that day.
So is, is, I'm, I'm not familiar with, with this organization or what, what the background is, but I know second amendment rights can get very polarizing on either side. I mean, where, where, where does this group stand? I mean, are we putting ourselves in harm's way by looking like we're taking a stand in one direction or another that could be counterintuitive?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll share that, uh, thousands of communities across the country, uh, already show their solidarity and support here. I think the names speak for themselves. It's Every Town for Gun Safety. So again, it's focusing on the safety aspect there and not saying no guns, um, which is, has helped bring more allies to the table there. Uh, and then Mayors Against Illegal Guns, specifically focusing on, not against guns, but against illegally gained guns and illegally used guns. Uh, and then Moms Demand Action focuses on, um, mothers who had lost their sons and their daughters to gun violence uh, and their demand for, for further safety in the community. So these organizations have very specifically tried to position themselves in an inclusive manner that focuses on how we make progress moving forward without being against guns specifically.
So long as this doesn't have any, it does not fringe any at all where someone could think this is a challenge to a second amendment. If somebody can research that, I don't have a problem.
Okay. We can do a little more research and bring that back up for council tomorrow and at tomorrow night's meeting. But I wanted to toss it out, recognizing we're on a short timeframe, uh, to hit the June sixth lighting. Uh, any other questions or things folks would like us to bring back for further discussion on this tomorrow? All right, we'll bring you back some answers to your question, Jim. Any other council comments? All right, with that, um, this concludes our June first, twenty twenty Burlington City Council work session. We'll hold our June second City Council meeting tomorrow, also via Zoom. The meeting link and information to participate will be on the virtual platform and you can call, uh, in for information or find it on our website at BurlingtonNC.gov slash media. And that meeting will be live streamed via the City of Burlington's YouTube page on youtube.com slash COBNC. About any other further comments, we'll be adjourned until seven PM tomorrow evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Bye.
Good night.
See you later.